It being 6:30, I call this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea Select Board to order. John?
I'm here.
Dan is here. Kathy?
I'm here too.
Brian?
I'm here.
Jeff? Hey, I got all the names right. Okay. Yeah, it helps.
We'll have more opportunities.
The first item on our agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any in the room? Is there any online?
Not seeing any.
Okay. The next is the chairman's report. And I would like to report briefly that one of our goals from several years ago was to improve communications and get the select board out into the community. And I will commend everyone here except me for doing that. In various venues, places where we answer questions, places where we just show up, this board has done more to get out into the community than any that I have been on before. And I salute you for it. The next on the agenda is the action items. And are there any? There's one action item that is on here that's not on our agenda, which is the Ocean Street review.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that one. You know, we got the news that the grant was not, we were not selected for the grant, but we need to develop next steps, so...
Let's move back to this.
Can we discuss that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we were, we've asked for some feedback on that. They just said that we applied for funding. We should have that prior to your next meeting.
Okay.
Because in lieu of getting another grant, though, we gotta do something and figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would, last month we had an update on CADA, and I'd probably put that back on for sometime in January.
Okay.
Or some time in January.
Are there any other items that should or should not be on the, I'm sure no thanks it shouldn't be, but any suggestions for the action items? Okay. Then we can go directly to the fire department for the pinning ceremony.
Good evening. Thank you for having us in. Today, we have the opportunity to do a badge pinning for a call firefighter as well as a promotional badge pinning for one of our officers. So first, I'd like to introduce Joe Sanfilippo. Joe was a call firefighter with us previously. He came back on board. He's already a certified firefighter, one and two, and has already been active with the department since his return. So welcome him back. We have his wife Julie here, who will be doing his badge pinning. And Joe lives in Gloucester, and he's able to help us out on the tough times, the overnight times and the early in the morning time. So we want to thank Joe for his dedication and willingness to come back and serve the community. So no further ado. You guys practice this?
No.
That's trouble.
His eyes are still sticking from the chest.
We've got EMTs here, so don't worry about it. I can't see him. Right, there we go.
It looks good. Looks firm.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next, I'd like to bring up now, being pinned as captain, Bob Cavender. Bob has been with the department for many years. From order to lieutenant a few years ago. Went through an assessment center as well as a written examination. A little bit about Bob. One of the things with the department is leading by example. He leads by example every day. One of the things is you can train to do something right. He trains till his crew doesn't get it wrong. And that's the type of thing and the dedication that I expect, and he does a wonderful job. Katie's joining, as well as his son Owen and Soya.
Gold and gentle.
Oh, no, he's just gonna bounce out. Bear with me.
Oh, you're doing great.
There you go.
Finally.
Thanks, Troy. This is Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Good job.
Don't throw too far away.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Harbor Management Plan Task Force update, which is in your packets. And is Sarah going to be here?
Yeah, she told me late she had a meeting. She had another meeting.
But we do have Byon online. Any questions for you?
Wow, you're all closed. It doesn't say Harbor Master.
I'm not on duty. I'm home.
I assume everyone has read. Jeff, do you have questions or comments?
I had a question about interest in implementing recreational shell fishing.
Yeah, actually, Jeff, that is part of the, one of the things that's been discussed. And the Shellfish Warden, Jim Elder, is on this committee. So it is important and definitely part of this process.
What's...
I'm surprised it isn't listed here.
Okay. Is that something that they're gonna move forward with? Or is this just what's settled in then?
Yeah, so it's in the documentation for the management plan. The process actually started a number of years ago. It takes years, years to get marine fisheries to open up closed shellfish beds, which has everything to do with the outfall and salmon and our own. They were closed because they weren't, well, they weren't as good as they are today. But that process will keep moving forward. It's in this plan just because it's important that we keep that in front of everybody with a heart of this president moving forward. So definitely, yes, we are working towards real marine shellfish beds.
That's, I mean, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I have a question.
Yes.
So in terms of the topic areas, I thought it was very comprehensive and covered a lot of ground. What I'd be looking for in the next draft, and I didn't really see it mentioned, is prioritization. You know, whenever I see a list of more than five things that usually screams that, you know, you need some prioritization, because all of these topic areas are not of equal importance. So is the committee looking towards that survey to help with that prioritization? Or is there some other means that they expect to use to prioritize these areas?
Right, so the survey and then the public session that was held last winter will be used to identify the things that are most important to the residents here in town. The priority will come from this feedback, yes.
So will it be, can we expect to see that in the next draft, I guess?
So the draft plan will be shared with the task force in early to mid-January and for review. And then the public draft will come out in, likely in April. And there will be public feedback again. We'll probably have another breakout session. And folks will get to weigh in. And I'm sure some things will move up and down as the draft priority goes at that point. But it will be driven by the public in there.
Go ahead.
No, at this point, it's been what we wanted to touch on. And now we'll just wait for the next draft, because that will be fine.
Yeah, just one observation or question, Byon. It's probably covered in these bullets one way or another, but I'd like to have some specific comment with regard to the Reed Masconomo Harbor expansion. Because that's been an area that folks had probably, I've heard some talk about that, and I'm sure it will get addressed somewhere here, but I think it warrants a separate bullet.
Yep. Absolutely. May the note.
And I know that's a moving target, where it stands now versus spring, but the task force will do the best it can.
Yes, it will. Yep. Thank you for that. I've got that noted.
What, I'm curious about potential sites for a second boat round.
So that will be dropping off the list. We had a discussion with Christine Player, our engineer of record for just about all the good things that have happened. And she came out and looked at the site, met with members of the yacht club, MSA, Harbor Department. And the site that was identified potentially as the place for this is not suitable. So it's back to the drawing board.
Curiosity, what was it?
Well, if you were to go over to the chopper house, the left of the chopper house, down to the bank there where folks go with their dogs and throw sticks in the water, the bank's pretty badly degraded right there. And that was identified as a site that could be converted to a ramp due to mitigation of the waterfront around it, but it's just too steep.
Thank you. Is the current ramp overused?
No, this one was targeted more towards sailing dinghies, smaller sailing vessels that could potentially be part of the yacht club or community sailing program to promote and expand sailing and competition in Manchester, which unfortunately, we don't have enough of. The sort of accommodated hand-dollyed sailboats or, you know, maybe even something with a golf cart type of launching not accommodating the type of vessels that are launched behind Town Hall.
I was surprised to see a community boating program, because I thought we had one.
Well, there's some discussion about MSA doing more. This really, this is in here just to try to promote it. What we have is a really community sailing program. It is a sailing school. And I think it's moving towards a community sailing program.
And they do adult stuff. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, that's, I think we have what we were looking for. I would be interested in seeing the draft before you come up with a final form, but that's just because I'm nosy. But I think several of us are.
Yeah, I'm just as nosy, so.
No, absolutely. So the committee will get the draft in right after the first of the year. And then try to clean it up a little bit, and then provide the draft again in April. If you wanted to see it before the public, I strongly suspect it will be accommodated.
All of these are public documents, I believe. So, you know, there's no point in, okay, fine. So we will add that to our actions for February something. Okay. Our next item is the boat launch update. And I've got detailed information. And Greg sent out an overview which suggested that it made a profit by $5,000.
Yes.
Yes. Does anyone?
Answer your questions or should I give a summary of the season?
Okay, why don't you give a summary of the season?
Fine, go ahead.
Sure, okay. And I actually updated it a little bit today. The numbers look a little bit different from what you have in front of you. We did manage to generate some revenue this weekend with the carnival in town. Nothing Friday or Saturday, but we did bring in $349 on Sunday. Approximately $80. Signed up for the full-time service, which was great. We brought in $800, as of yesterday, $850 in the per ride, the $10 per person each way. And the Harbor force is right around $4,600 so far. Remember that we're fiscal, our year won't end until June 30th. So I wouldn't be surprised to see the numbers go up for the fiscal year, unless we want to run this calendar, whatever your pleasure.
I shouldn't answer so quickly, but I think having something that's financial and on our financial calendar is going to get to be a mess.
Yeah, yeah. Fiscal year is good.
So one of the things here, I'm sure you've noticed, our $18 an hour rate is competitive with Gloucester only. Everyone else around is paying 25. I'm gonna recommend an increase to 23 for next year. And I did put a breakout staff cost projections by hours per month for you at the $23 an hour. Right now, as of right now, we spent $12,270 to staff a launch, and we have a balance of just under $18,500. I suspect you also saw that we did have a mechanical on the small launch with a Randy transmission, two-year-old transmission. So we did have to have that replaced this year.
John, do you have any?
Yeah, I just had a question when I was looking at, so this year it's around 5,000. I'm not quite figuring out how the math works here. I think I'd appreciate it if you could kind of put the numbers together, budget versus actual on some lines, because to try and figure out where you are, we kind of had to move around this sheet. The numbers are all there, but they're not lined up, and it's a little bit of a challenge. But hopefully, in the future, you can put it together more along the lines of regular financials. A question on your 26 staff cost projections, which are significantly higher and significantly higher than the 25% or so increase in your assumption in going from 18 to 23. Is there a reason behind that increase? Was the staffing this year insufficient, and it should have been higher? Or what's the thinking behind that?
Well, if you go back into the document, I do talk about the challenges of the staffing issue. We got an extremely late start. I couldn't advertise for staffing. I will say that the majority of the people that I was interested in do jobs at yacht clubs and here in Beverly and Marblehead. And then our $18 an hour rate, I did lose somebody partly through the season to more money. So, and we did not have launch drivers for every shift all summer long. But as I said back when we were talking about bringing this onboard, the slow days I was able to fill in with Harbor Masters who are already on duty. So the launch was staffed every shift, but we certainly didn't have enough just launch drivers.
It sounds like you didn't have a lot of non-launch drivers. I mean, the projections are double what they were. And I understand that the increase of 30% or whatever is part of that. But the other 70%, you're saying that was covered by you or somebody else because you didn't have people?
So I had $30,000 for staffing for this year. I have the 41. That's approximately what I estimated I needed. I'm projecting for next year, right around 50.
Okay, I think.
I'm sorry, 39. I apologize.
39.
Forty, so 40,000. 40,000, so that's a $10,000 increase over this year, made up of the $5 per hour difference that I'm recommending that we're going to have to go to in order to staff launch.
So you had a budget of 30,000 this year, and you came in at 12?
Well, 12 so far.
Well, okay, 12 so far, but...
He's got May, June, and July, or May and June next year.
Right, I've got two more months to go.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. You have more to go.
And I'll be able to advertise and hire people at the appropriate time this coming year. So I expect to have a broader pool of candidates.
Well, the number is very conservative, May and June. May's, you know, a little slow. June, I mean, certainly together, they're certainly equal to a summer month and maybe a little bit more. But being conservative, I understand. Okay.
My question is, the budget won't be established until after town meeting, which is mid-April. Is that time enough to hire?
It is. We couldn't even secure the money for, I had the 40,000. I'm going to go with the assumption that the launch will operate again this coming year. So I'll hire. I'm going to tell everyone the rate this past season was $18 an hour. I'm hoping that we go to 23. That's the expectation. And if people want to take that chance, which I suspect many of them will, we'll have people who, as of July 1st, will go from the 18 to the increase, whatever it is. Be a little bit of a flyer on their part, but...
Any other questions on this?
So I agree with John. I think it would be helpful to go back to the original financial chart we used with FinCom, right? Marry these numbers with that. Explain what's in a fiscal year versus a calendar, you know, what's in-season. Just because it's hard to make some sense out of it. But I just want to make sure that whatever we do for next season, we're consistent with the commitment we made to the town, which is, there's gotta be so many people who sign up for the service or it doesn't run, right? So if we're talking about increasing some of the costs, we've got to figure out what is that minimum number of customers that we need? And do you need to adjust the price so that you can do that? Because it seems like we came dangerously close to barely covering the costs without the Harbor Tours. The Harbor Tours were like 3,000, whatever. That's why we made a profit of 5,000. Okay, so is the Harbor Tours 3,000 of that? Because that means, we've just got to be real careful with setting the price for next year and making sure we have the right number of minimum sign-ups so that we're covering the cost with stable dollars and whatever we get for Harbor Tours is gravy.
So the budget you gave me for this year was 41,000. Showed that we brought in 46,000 approximately in our prepaid customers, so 5,000.
Because the 46 was for just the prepaid.
Yeah, correct.
Got it, okay.
And then another nearly 5,000 in Harbor Tours. So that's 10,000, you know, over the budget that I was given for this year. And so far, we still have $18,000 in payroll to spend, so.
Got it.
Well, that 30,000 that was allocated for salaries doesn't include the $10,000 for insurance.
Right, the insurance. I'm including the insurance in my thought process, so.
All right, yep. So that leaves us 20,000 to the good.
Is there anything we can do to help you prepare to put your case in front of the FinCom?
No, I feel comfortable with this guidance tonight that I'll have all the numbers put together in an acceptable manner. And certainly, if I am uncomfortable or feel like I'm not there, I won't be shy about reaching out.
Anything else on the launch? I think we're looking for a motion on this.
I moved that the select board grant approval for the boat launch service to be included in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Jeff says yes. Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Dan says yes.
John, yes.
Jeff says yes. Okay, thank you very much, Byon, for both of your presentations.
Thank you, Byon.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a speedy rest of your evening.
We've only got 73 pages left to go.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item on...
These guys can fly through your, huh? Fly through your stuff.
Yes. Very nice, very complete presentation. No, I don't know whether it's complete. Very nice presentation. Do you want to give us a short summary of what you think the high points are?
Yeah, sure. So obviously, here we are again in the next quarter passed. It seems like it was yesterday or just here. Accreditation was the highlight of the last three months. We managed to basically finalize all our files, finalize all our policies, did all the updates, changed over to the new sixth edition standards. And as you can see, we were compliant with 273 out of 274 standards. I mean, one of the things that we got held up on was... our training for our parking enforcement people for fire space policing and emotionally disturbed, dealing with emotionally disturbed people. Something we should have been doing all along. I don't know how it got through the last three accreditation, but we've made a significant change there. We've already done the training with the three people that we've had onboard this year. That was one thing. As you can see, community policing was a huge thing. We've done a lot of outreach, working with Jake and the Fire Department in regards to after-school slush event. One of the highlights was a Manchester Essex Police and Fire softball game against the Essex Police and Fire softball game. And we're happy to report that we candidly beat them. I won't release the score, but we did. It was a great team-building exercise. And we're looking forward to doing it again next year. I was approached by the Manchester Essex Little League at the Carnival. They want to help us promote it next year, maybe to raise some money for our scholarships and CSOC.
And only one injury, is that what it's called?
We have one injury. One of our retirees broke his arm, but he made it. But he's doing fine. And emergency management was one of the things that I've worked on quite a bit in the last three months. I participated with Town Green in an emergency preparedness event over at Legion and an online Zoom meeting that Greg was on with, basically teaching people how to prepare their homes and have their effects ready in the case of a major hurricane. One of the things that we, meaning we had to cancel because I was a little bit under the weather. We're going to do a debris management plan, working with Chuck and Mema, because in the event, we have that major hurricane, all that stuff that will wash in from the harbor. It's all going to be hazardous waste, and we'd have to have a plan on how to deal with it. Those are basically the three things that we've been working on the last three months.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I read your report and I commend you on all of the community policing initiatives. Also the accreditation and those two topics were the major ones. But the community policing efforts, just one paragraph after another. You're really reaching out so that your police force really, they become familiar faces with as many folks in town as possible. And I commend you for all of those efforts. You reviewed the high points, but that's because there weren't any low points.
Yeah.
I thought it was good. I did have a question on the parking enforcement grid. Those numbers are a little confusing to me.
Yeah, I didn't get the full numbers for Beach Street. But those are numbers, those are the, so 2018 through 2023 are the total numbers for Beach Street? Like all of Beach Street?
Just carving out, just where the posts are or all of Beach Street?
All of Beach Street. So 2024 is where the posts were. So from the tracks to tap them. And I noticed a typo up top that it was 215 violations, but I put 210 in the narrative.
Oh, okay, so that's to date?
That was to the date of this October 1st.
And counting?
Yeah, so we will probably have more because we ran it through October 15th or whatever.
Oh, so it's ended now or you're not sending them out? Maybe it's still measuring or whatever.
No, but I have met with the Parking Solutions people. And we have the cement pads put in in the other areas, like we talked about in front of the post office, in front of the fire hydrants out here and on Beach Street. And they're looking to expand maybe next season because they thought it went very well.
I was going to ask.
So I have a meeting coming up with them in the next couple of weeks. So there'll be more to follow on that. I'll probably be back in front of you to tell you where we would like to expand. Definitely the areas that we already have the cement pads possibly put in. But then an area of Summer Street going up Electric Lake Hill past the National Grid building is another possible spot that we would put the sticks.
What is the seasonal period of enforcement for those sticks?
So we usually run May 15th. Well, in the past, when we had the staff, we run May 15th through Columbus.
Okay. And so that would be more or less what would be expected? Good.
I have a question. This is for both Chuck and you. Who do those things in the winter? Couldn't really, I was plowing the sidewalks. Looking at, they're going to remain and then replace them when they're knocked over?
I asked them that question and they're going to leave them for now. And if it turns into an issue, then they'll come out and put them back in the.
Well, we're on that subject, similar question. When John asked about the timing, the signs that we have around parking enforcement gives one the impression we're enforcing the parking 365 days a year and we're really not. So I just wanted to throw it out there. In Rockport, if you go to downtown Rockport, the signs actually say the months when the parking is enforced. And people have to use the, they have a kiosk, so you have to use a kiosk. But it's clear when parking is being enforced and not, so just.
I think that would have to be a change to the bylaw by the board.
Well, I'm asking, are we, so now that, when you introduce technology, right? Sometimes the processes or procedures have to change. So the sticks are going to be out there. Are they going to continue to, are we going to continue to use them? If not, then we might want to let people know, you know, might want to have the sign reflect reality. So I just, I'm not promoting one way or another. If you enforce it 365 or you tell people you're not enforcing it 365, one way or another.
I think we've got parking, a list of things to talk about sometime in the future. This gets a little tricky because if we say we're not enforcing it, are people going to just park there?
Well, that's it. But if you have the sticks there, then you have to enforce it. And if there's one person parking for longer than two hours and all of the spaces are empty, now it's getting enforced and then you might hear other types of complaints. So I just, when you introduce technology, it's not the same as doing it manually as always.
So I did ask John Johnson to change the signs that now it says electronically being.
I saw that, that was great.
Yeah, so I did ask him now to change the signs back to the original eight, six.
Okay, okay. There you go. Regarding, sorry, John, were you done?
Yeah, I'm pretty much done, but that's a fair point. I needed, it affected me personally.
On what I want to do.
Yes. In a fairly short period of time, I might.
So they work?
I just look in the mailbox on a weekly basis.
Question, a couple of questions for you. Again, great report. You mentioned the Chiefs of Police Conference. I noticed them in the Seaport District when I was driving through there last week. Were you able to attend that?
I attended Saturday night.
Anything, any takeaways that you care to share?
No, so one thing that we were looking at is the IMC that we went to with Regional Dispatches potentially going away. So one of the things that Chris Ryan from Regional asked, if we looked around for the police side of things, looked around and see what other records management systems that we could potentially use eventually. That's only the real thing that I was focused on, on that. Next year, it's in Boulder, Colorado. So I'll probably tend the entire conference then. But it's difficult to manage being home when it's right down the street. So I didn't attend it regularly like I did last year, just that one day.
And just one other question. I'm glad Daisy was a big hit this year.
Yeah, she was.
Just out of curiosity, because we've had some great fundraisers here in Manchester. She does service Essex schoolchildren as well. Do they ever have a fundraiser to help with her care?
They haven't as of yet, yeah.
Maybe put a mention in there that they can help fund her too?
We had a fundraiser here at the school, at the beach.
I saw that, yeah, that's great.
I think it was just over, actually, if we had better weather, we would have done a lot better. A lot better, we made over like $500 for that one day. So that was good.
The rain weather, that was awesome.
Still good for rainy, cold day. But I think Andrew is going to work with the two students that brought this forward and try something with them. And we also are working with Tiffany on a business promotion where they can donate for a month and then the dog will wield their business.
Oh, a moving banner. Wear a little jacket or something that says.
So that'll be rolling out very shortly.
How cute, okay.
Trying to think of our sign ordinance and how. How that applies to.
Moving target.
It should be traveling, it's a school resource vehicle.
Yeah, so we did not trade in the vehicle that we were supposed to trade in this year because they were only going to give us $2,500. And then we got a discounted dog cage for it from another community. And we were able to, with the money allocated for the new car this year, we were able to cut some money out of the new car for upfitting and lights. And as you can see, it's black with the ghost lettering. That saved us $1,000 there rather than having it black and white. So we were able to use that entire budgeted, funds budgeted to outfit her car and we saved the other one.
And that's going to be.
That's solely dedicated to the dog.
So, oh, the dog.
She has her own chair.
Love her, yeah, the dog.
I'm just thinking of selling the advertising on that vehicle. Oh, you see, I mean, I think that Gloucester's SRO's vehicle is all advertised up.
But that vehicle was donated.
People in Manchester donated this one. Just a.
Any further questions from Kate?
I just have a comment, it's a lot of good work here. And thank you to you and everyone who put this together. It's great. I was glad to see all the stuff at the school and the dog and working with the kids. And I think that's really important, so that's great.
Yeah, it worked out really well.
Yeah.
A lot of positive feedback as I put in the memo from the middle school principal.
Yeah, that's great.
Was the dog tasting the pies as well?
She was there.
She tried to get on the table.
Any, oh, no. Is there anyone online who has, okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
The hot seat continues.
So I apologize I didn't send a report for the quarter, but with the monthly reports, I think you have a good overview. I'll hit on a few items. One is I can't thank God and staff, the softball tournament, just, that's just one part of the cohesion that's going on between police and fire, between training out in the street on calls. It's pretty impressive where we're at. Staffing updates, we have six qualified firefighters, so we're fully staffed on that end, fully staffed on the full-time end. And I think our overtime reflects that. We're right on budget and being fully staffed allows us to do that without any other huge spikes historically that we've seen. Vehicle-wise, the new ladder truck is working out awesome. It's really exceeding our expectations. You might see the guys out in it all the time because they're out training and doing different things on a daily basis. Engine one currently has a coolant leak, so we're in the process. We've replaced some lines, but it's still leaking. They don't know where, so we're working on that. And then we're also still borrowing the Loomfield engine, which is working out great for us. Their stations won't be ready for another year or so, so if we get another year, hopefully we can hold on to it. One of the things that I had mentioned, I had talked to Greg and I brought it up with the Finance Committee. We have been working, our dealer that we got the ladder truck through is also the same dealer that we ordered the ambulants through last year. So trying to think creatively, we have an engine that's due for Engine One in FY '28. So looking at the pricing on the engines and kind of forecasting, they have a new environmental ruling on diesel engines. It's going to add another $100,000 to the cost of the motor, not just the truck. So we're working with the dealer. We've come up with an idea to spec a demo truck for us. They're going to buy it or spec it on their own. That would be available to us in FY '28 for current day money. So I'm working on trying to get some of their specifics on that. But it's a little creative way to try to.
Okay, so we get a two-year-old truck?
No, it'll be, it takes two and a half years to build. We just don't have to pay for it to actually get it there. Normally, you have to pay for a truck for two years before you can get to see it. So it's just trying to play, you know, move the basket a little bit, if you will. Our software is working awesome. Like Todd had mentioned, the Regional Dispatch is looking at new software for the dispatch as well as the police. 90% of the fire departments are using something called First Do, not IMC. So they're going to try to get the Regional to use that software so they'll start absorbing those costs once they do a transition or switch over. So that's working out well. New website's up and running operational. We've had some great feedback from residents. Our Community Connect, where residents can log in and give us information, skyrocketed with the amount of people that have logged into the website, clicked on that link and added some resources to it. One of the things I'll be putting forward to you in the future is some rate increases on permits and fees. Just, we haven't really increased our permitting on the fire prevention side in a while. Some is handcuffed by national law, but there are some other areas that we can increase as well, as well as maybe potentially looking at burning permit charges, singing beach bonfires, cooking fires. Typically, we were giving out for free. I think that maybe we could get a few bucks for those. Essentially, training, all the members attended the manufacturer ladder truck training as well as rope rescue training last month. And then this month, we'll be doing extrication training as well. Other than that, equipment, the grants have been going really well. Thanks to Chief Fitzgerald, we got an emergency management grant to outfit the UTV with lights and a radio. And then we're also looking at an equipment grant to put a little patient transport, called the Skid Unit, goes in the back of it so you can put a patient back there or a forest fire pump. The vehicle's been used four times as of last week. We had to take somebody else out of the woods, so that played a major role. Blasting is 90% done. So we have one more little area in the 128 belt that they have to wait for the state DOT to approve that. And that's probably going to be in the January, February timeframe. I don't have an exact position for exact deadline.
Do you know how many days of blasting that's?
I believe they said about a week. Don't quote me on that because that's going to change. They're doing it based upon, once they start in that area, they'll have a better idea. They're just doing it based upon what they've seen for rock so far and forecasting and outdoors, what they expect to see in that little area.
120 will actually be closed?
They'll do a rolling block. So they'll do, as a state police officer, will start slowing traffic at 1:33 right before they blast and then they'll let them go. So it's not shut down.
It's not slow, it's slow.
Yeah, gotcha, yep. That's about it?
Does blasting debris hurt glass if you're going slower?
It's all in the air on the side of the caution, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, I did read your report, which was, was it two weeks ago or something? And I looked at that. You know, just like the policing end of things, you guys are reaching out and have got a lot of things that are out in the public. It's community policing. I can't say community firefighting necessarily is the right term.
I mean, we've been doing.
But maybe there's something along those lines.
Yes, we're doing, we'll be in the schools. We've talked to all the principals. We'll be in the schools a couple of times for each grade, kindergarten through third. And then we'll be in the Council on Aging, helping them with the Community Connect and doing some, we've seen an increase in cooking fires, so doing some fire awareness, maybe the community centers in Newport Park and the place.
Outreach, John, community outreach.
All right, that's good, which is a broad term, but that fits.
The Jilly Cook Off was a great success.
I didn't get the results on that.
A qualified firefighter was won by a, just like we didn't mention the softball score.
All right, okay. Let me for asking. So a question, in your first section here on your report, you look at it and say, I guess it's maybe coincidental. All the vehicles had problems.
Yep.
Now, is that symptomatic just because of age or something? I mean, I understand the latter, I had to go back to, you know, it's just new and a few things.
Yep.
But the engine, which I know is old.
Yep, that's 2011, I believe. So typically, it should be front lines. You should get about 20 years, 25 years out of an engine. It should be a primer. a primer response vehicle for the first ten and then go to the backup. So it's, it was primer response vehicle for, since two thousand and eleven since.
I mean, I didn't look at historical ones. Sometimes when I'm looking at this, the status report is just in terms of vehicles on order, there aren't any problems.
Yep.
It's just.
These just started to creep.
September happened to be a tough month.
Exactly.
Okay.
Started creeping up.
Fine. When I just saw that, I, I had to ask the question because you're juggling a lot of vehicles.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, um, again, thank you for the community outreach. Um, I like the, the postings on the website, you know, and, on the social media when you're just doing even the training or responding to an incident, it gives the residents an, an understanding of what you do every day because hopefully they don't have to call you to come to their house and meet you that way. So, um, I think that's all great. Uh, I like the idea of trying to take a look at the, the revenue portion of your responsibilities. We'd probably have a look at that at all. Um, so that would be good. I had a question for you regarding, um, uh, multifamily housing. So, um, it just came up in discussion with my neighbors. We live in multifamily housing, but, you know, if we go forward with the three-A zoning changes or whatever and we start to see more multifamily housing, is there anything that we should be thinking? And you don't have to answer me right now, right? But is there anything we should be thinking about in terms of, you know, fire prevention or safety? Um, tweaking our bylaws or anything? Just, I think it's good to look at that.
Yeah.
Um, if you haven't already, because we, you know, we haven't looked at a lot of things in a lot of years and you're, and you're chipping away at it, which is great. Um, that's just another thing maybe.
Yeah, I'll get back to you. I know a bunch of communities have looked at different, um, variations of residential sprinkler codes. Once you hit a certain amount of units, it automatically triggers by state law anyway.
How many units is that? You know? Okay, get, get back.
Uh, so there's different, different communities have tackled that different ways. That would be one thing that we could look at depending on the density and things like that.
Yeah, for like any new construction or, um, you know, I think that would be something we should at least think about.
Oh, I think that, uh, Chief Clary actually brought that up a couple of years ago.
He was talking about retrofitting what we have versus. Um, or at some point, but also for new construction and I'm just.
It was on the radar.
It was on the radar and I just, you know, if we do approve any zoning changes, we probably wanna get in front of that. Thank you very much. And the chili was great. My daughter, my granddaughter, daughter and I, we, all three voted for different people. So we have different tastes in my family, but it was a great time.
Long ago, there was no cinnamon in it. Uh, no, this is not the same fire department from two years ago. I, uh, think that people from Manchester want more, deserve more and they're getting more. And that, both, Chief, thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's not me. The staff is the ones that, they're the boots on the ground and they, they're interacting with the public on a daily basis. So my hat's off to them.
But, yeah, but lead by example.
Cards at the top.
I had, um, really have much to say. Just thank you and your department for all your hard work. Um, everything looks good. Actually, one thing I did have a question about under the work time scheduling.
Yeah.
Says acting out a grade, a hundred and five hours. That's people doing jobs above their.
Yeah, so let's say lieutenant is out on vacation. Uh, they see a firefighter or an acting lieutenant move up in their spot and they're compensated for those hours.
Those hours.
So it's not overtime hours, it's.
Plus whatever that, whatever that grade for different, yeah, okay.
Thank you for your monthly reports. They're very informative. Thank you for getting involved in softball and.
Well, I had to leave for the woods rest yourself.
Well, um, yeah, the, the, the whole, can't say the whole atmosphere in town has been much, much improved, but the, certainly the relationship between our public safety.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's working by on and Todd and, uh, DPW. I think all the departments really, um, you know, foster one another and, um, it's, uh, pretty cool to see.
And, and there's lots of outreach to, to bring the public in, which is very nice. Thank you. Okay, the, um, next item on our agenda is the charter house rental fee increase. Did everyone see the message from Jack Burke who thinks it should be much higher?
Oh, no, I didn't see that. I didn't see that.
Is that right?
Okay. It may have been just to you and me and I didn't. Anyway, um, Jack is from the community preservation committee point of view. He thinks that the, the community preservation committee is putting a lot of money into maintaining those facilities. And he thinks that we could increase, further increase, um, the rental fees. I did check with the yacht club and the yacht club charges two hundred dollars an hour, Monday through Thursday.
An hour?
An hour. Um, with no time limit and three hundred dollars an hour with a minimum of five hour Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Right, well, I can't figure out what, how that compares with, because I don't know how many hours each of the charter house things.
It's like four or five hours.
Yeah.
Morning, cup for evening. It's four.
Three, three to four.
So it would be fifteen hundred dollars from the yacht club for a Friday, five hour.
What are they providing? Nathan?
Oh, they're probably providing, they're cer, almost cer, I, I don't, they can provide a bartender.
Additionally to the, yeah, in addition to that, uh.
Yeah. Um, they, they would certainly have somebody there from the staff to watch out for the tips question.
Yeah. I mean, do they clean up and all that?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting that, 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 that we need to increase these rates further than Cheryl and Ashley, but I think in comparison with at least one local group.
I mean, it's a beautiful venue. Um, this is quite modest fee for a venue like that. But it is, you know, it's out, you know, then you get, you get, you get risk. So I was headed with that as well, so.
My head.
One question or observation here. I, I get the impression that the weekends are all sold out.
Certainly during the summer months, yes.
Okay, and, and looking at this in the math, it seems like they're all sold out to residents. Because the difference between when we dropped on the, on the outside people, we dropped ten folks a couple of years ago. And the differential is four hundred dollars, which makes that four thousand bucks. And that's pretty close to what the difference was in the money drop. So I'm just wondering if that's because we give residents, what, like a one-week running start or something? I don't know.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, all right. So they jump on all of it and so the outside guys, they don't have a chance to spend more money because there's nothing to spend it on.
Certainly during the weekends, yeah.
Yeah, during the weekends. And I, I, I think that's where this is. So we've got, we've got this limited inventory and it's a great marketing exercise. To say, you know, what's the point of, uh, resistance here? But, uh, Cheryl, I think has assessed it correctly and she says, no, we're not doing anything about the out of, out of town residents, which is saying in town is going up.
Just wanna make sure we're fair to the residents too, I mean.
Well, they have a first shot at it and they should.
Yeah.
It's still a best deal in town.
That's the best deal on the.
But I, you know, I would ask Cheryl and say, do all of the residents get the Saturday, Sunday? In other words, by the time that week goes by, there's nothing left for out of town a line?
There might be a half, Cheryl's on the, on the line. She can, you wanted to, I don't know if you know that answer, Cheryl? No, you're muted.
Like to stop. How do we mute Cheryl?
Um, is there really any more explanation that we need? I, I, I am with Jeff on this. This is, this town property, you know, lots of it comes out of the CPA, which is funded by the town.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't wanna give it away, but I think, uh, it's kind of a.
Don't wanna price it so only the top tier of Manchester.
Right, yeah, exactly.
I think this is, uh, for those who don't have membership to the yacht club or access to the yacht club, who still want some of the same, uh, amenities, amenities. You know, you're not gonna go in a singing beach club, you're not going to, uh, D and T. This is, this is the common man's private club. And I think that it's gotta, and for that reason, I think it's gotta keep, keep it affordable.
I mean, my, as long as we're covering maybe a little bit from the cost and a little, I don't know.
Yeah, um, Cheryl's email here indicated it would, a modest increase would help cover costs. Are we covering our costs? I think that was my question the last time.
We, we are, yeah.
I think we are, right?
Okay.
I think Cheryl's got her sound on, working if you wanna.
All right, don't be blaming that on me. That had me muted. Um, so I think John's question was about, um, the early, uh, reservations done by, uh, residents. So the residents start in October. They start actually this Thursday and that usually does take care of a lot of the Saturdays. Not so much the Sundays and a couple of Fridays, but, but then non-residents can start in January. So it does cut down just by the schedule and just cut down a lot of the big weddings too. Um, but big weddings are a lot of wear and tear too, so that's kind of why we end up with just a few of those a year, which is fine. Um, but I think it's always been kind of a, a balance is what we're looking for with the charter house. Um, I think like Brian said, the poor man's, uh, yacht club, which I appreciate. Um, so I do, you know, I, the way I've always understood it is that's kind of how we as a town want it to be, but, you know, so if the changes, you let me know. I feel like a fifty-dollar increase for residents is modest and most people won't even notice. Um, but I think if we go up too much, we're just, you know, it's, it's just not a community building anymore. So it's just, which, you know, which way do we want it to be?
Okay.
I was looking when my daughter got married, uh, she was looking at how much money to get a nice venue. And so instead, let's save the money. Some nice venue, it's not gonna cost us, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, right? And, uh, I'm a big fan of, I haven't had a lot of success with weddings, but.
That is one part of the narrative.
I've been to three weddings there and all three have ended into fours.
You're not invited to any.
So don't invite me to any weddings.
Do I need to add a middle column to my spreadsheet? Successful weddings?
Those are extra.
I think Brian's gonna have a column of his own.
Okay, is there, um, any more discussion or should we get a motion?
I remember that the board approved the increase to the residential rates for renting of the charter house as recommended by the parks and recreation committee.
Okay.
John?
Yes?
Anne says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Cheryl and everyone. Okay, um, the next, um, item on the agenda is, um, the special town meeting articles. And is, um, Alan Wilson?
He is, he's, uh, he is with us.
I'm here.
Greg, would you like to?
So we've had some discussions over the last couple of meetings about, uh, uh, articles besides the sort of main attraction, which is the three-A zoning. So in addition to that, uh, we do have a vote from the community preservation committees seeking vote approval for the, uh, contribution towards the, uh, de-normandy property conservation effort. Roughly three hundred and thirty acres in total. Part of that is in Manchester. Um, asking the town to approve two hundred and fifty thousand from CPC funds, um, to go towards that effort. It's a three million dollar project. Uh, we'd be contributing two hundred and fifty thousand. So I think in the past you've indicated that you'd be willing to put that on, on the rewards. Uh, so that, that is one item. A second item, we've talked about the need for us to upgrade our stormwater management, uh, regulations, bylaw and regulations. Uh, this is through what's called the MS four program. Uh, four S's there, but anyways, Chuck can probably tell me what those four S's stand for, 'cause I'm not remembering off the top of my head. But anyways, the, our current regulations, uh, they were modeled after the state, the EP template. Um, EPA has, um, desires some upgrades to that and is seeking, uh, upgrades for the, you know, all communities to, under stormwater management. We've been working, uh, with town council on an alternative approach. So instead of, you know, doing a, uh, we've got twenty-some odd pages of stormwater bylaw there now, um, and trying to revamp another, you know, twenty-three pages worth of bylaw. We're looking at having a much shorter and simpler bylaw that basically authorizes the DPW to promulgate regulations that are in compliance with EPA standards and guidelines. So that would be a much shorter bylaw. It's about three and a half pages, uh, that would, that would replace our existing bylaw. And I think makes for a simpler process and certainly makes it easier to update, uh, those regulations if and when new, uh, state and federal guidelines are, are, are developed. So we're, uh, we received a, a bylaw language from town council today. Chuck was going to run that by, uh, folks at EPA to make sure they were comfortable with it. Um, I think we're optimistic that they will be. And so I think this might be a good, a good way to proceed. And as I say, simplifies the process. Still, still accomplishes the same goal in terms of having, uh, those rules and regs in place, um, but makes it easier to, to modify as we go forward.
If we had done it three years or two years ago when we updated the bylaw, then all we'd have to do is go to a select board meeting to update the rules and regulations.
Although we'd have to read the twenty-three pages.
Well, yeah, we did that anyway.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I, I made one suggestion to town council for an addition to that draft bylaw. I'll pass it on to Chuck. Um, if he's gonna be the one to refer it to EPA. But basically my suggestion was we incorporate into the bylaw the December one, twenty twenty-four deadline that EPA has imposed on us.
Yeah.
For promulgating regulations.
Let's, uh, let's a little explanation point on that and I think we'll make EPA happy to see that deadline in there.
My first question is, are there any projects in town now or foreseen that would come under this stormwater between now and April?
Well, you know, had it been in place, you know, prior, like CST would have fallen under this, it wouldn't circumvent their need for a special permit or anything. But it would very, make it very clear that this was required because it's, the, the main catch is over an area, uh, acre of disturbed area. So, you know, that doesn't, that's not impossible, but, and then there's other guidelines within that, um, that would trigger the full, um, bylaw.
Okay. Right. I thought that, uh, okay, so, so the special permit from the planning board for CST would have had to follow these full regulations, whereas at the moment it doesn't. Okay, got it.
And there are certainly, you know, storm art standards in the special permit and, you know, other places in the zoning. But this is, you know, in some weird event where it doesn't trigger, you know, some sort of COCO review or some sort of planning board review. We have to have. We have to have this on the books. Municipal's sanitary sewer, separate sanitary sewer, the M S four. So.
Says sanitary or stormwater?
It's, they, the M S four acronym is sanitary or storm sewer, so it's.
Okay. It's different from a sanitary sewer?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
So they grandfathered under our current guidelines.
Grandfathered.
And when these, these change, in other words, they're, they're meeting our current guidelines, which will change based upon this thing. But they, they don't necessarily, because they started before that, fine.
Yeah, we're not, we're not retroactively adding.
Yes, that's what I.
Okay. Is, do we know of any other projects coming up that would? Yeah, but S L V is not.
But it, but it hasn't, I mean, if it's approved.
What I'm, what I'm trying to find out is why we absolutely positively have to bring this up at this town meeting.
Right, why now?
I'm sorry, because of the EPA deadline that they've imposed. That's, that's the short answer.
I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm trying to read into the mentality of the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had the option again at spring town meeting, but we weren't, you know, certainly not ready at that point, so we put it off.
Okay.
Do you think there's going to be a convoluted or confusion?
I think there may be people at the town meeting who are unhappy that the state is forcing things on us that we don't want. And they may not be happy that the EPA is forcing things on us that we don't.
And they may not have heard of this at all and they're totally surprised, and that will make them unhappy as well.
Yes.
You can admit it that way.
It's a, it's a trifecta of unhappiness.
If you want to look at our EPA permit from the, Nifty's permit for the wastewater, it's even more ridiculous, but you don't want to have that authority.
In terms of impacts, I think people would be very comfortable with what this is propagating and what it's trying to accomplish.
If they understood it.
Understood, I think they, they've approved an existing stormwater bylaw that is, is pretty close to what is being asked for in terms of refinements. So I, I think it can be sold as, as a, as an upgrade.
Yeah, just present it as an updated, I mean, common advantage.
An amendment to what we currently have.
It's not.
But what we are actually, I think, suggesting is that the town meeting lose control over this. That it, that, that the regulations be promulgated by the D P W and approved by the select board rather than presented to town meeting.
What can we do with that?
Well, so this goes back to the discussion about whether we wanted to present a twenty-three page document to the, to the voters at town meeting versus a three-page document. That's, and there was some thinking that a three-pager would, would be easier to digest. Having said that, what I just said still holds that even though it's a new set of twenty-three pages, it's not a sea change in terms of what's being proposed in terms of regulation. It's complying with, with what EPA is asking us to do, but it's, what they're asking us to do is close to what we have today.
So it's not, so it's not all new, it's just some of it's.
Correct.
Just polishing.
Question.
Chuck, if I could.
Certainly.
Thank you. I obviously would defer to the select board on this issue, but my own impression is that town meeting would be, particularly for this town meeting, when we're going to confront M B T A zoning, would be happy to pass this off, the CPA requirement off to the select board and the D P W to decide. I, I think they'll be happy not to have to wrestle with twenty-two, twenty-five pages of detailed regulations.
Question?
John.
For Chuck. Chuck, so you've gone through the regulations and you're prepared to chat about them for a couple of minutes, people? Because I think the town, they will look to you and I think they would, they, they would really seriously consider what your, your comments are in that regard. The one question I have here is frankly, we're sitting here, this is the first time we've seen this, I think. When did, when did this come out from?
So, yeah, you haven't seen the final version?
No, but this topic, this stormwater thing.
It did come up last, last, the winter.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the exact email was that we got from the, basically it was from EPA's council. How, you know, they were basically going through all of Massachusetts, looking for the people that adopted D P, mass D P's guidelines and saying, no, these are the real guidelines. But that was last fall or winter, some point. We could have had a draft ready for town meeting, but it would have been a heavy lift to, you know, make it understandable, just kind of like it is now. But we punted it from then to now, I, we did have a draft, I, you know, I was able to send it to Anne as Greg and I and Mark Resnick were passing it around our desk. I would say it's, it is tough because there's a lot of definition, you know, so there, if you're looking at it as a red line, there are a lot of definitions that we tried to capture back in, but those are kind of good housekeeping, not the content-driven changes. The content-driven changes are very light, but as Greg said, it's, you know, they are changes, they are coming from above, not from our, you know, existing, you know.
The town's requirements.
Yeah. That being said, I mean, they're not anything extravagant in terms of, you know, putting a lot of process. If anything, I would say they're, they're more regulating of stormwater, which goes kind of hand in hand with aiming development and curbing unruly development with respect to the environment. So they are along those lines, but they are coming from non-county.
Okay. Well, I, I, if I may, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Alan's comment that in light of the M B T A thing, if you provide testimony and your thoughts, I think a lot of people would say, fine. And I think there are people that say, oh, this strengthens things, that's good, which is what this does. And there's nothing active right now that I think you would have to address the CST and put that in context, but other than that.
They're going beyond those guidelines.
I understand.
Just want to be careful that we're not approving, we're not asking the town meeting to approve the regulations. We're asking the town meeting, I think, to lose, give up control over these regulations to the D P W and the select board. So I think that's a good idea because I don't think that there's anybody, that there are probably five people in town who would care enough to read all of these, understand them and ask reasonable questions.
And you were one of them.
This, this, all right? This is, this is stuff that's very technical for a, a, an open town meeting to take on. I, I think, in fact, that, that changing, the, the, the change that made it something that the D P W would produce and the select board would bless will make the town run better. I just hope that it can be brought to understand that that's what we're asking for. We shouldn't be getting into the question of, of whether the project is a concom directed permit or, or planning board directed project and where the D P W comes in and how it gets approved by the D P W. We should just, in my opinion, we're better off just saying, this is some, this is something that requires technical expertise and we have the technical expertise in the.
So what is the warrant actually going to say?
Well, the warrant would have the proposed three-pager that, that basically says we're moving forward with EPA compliant stormwater regs and that the D P W will promulgate those regulations after review and approval by the select board.
That works for me.
Yeah. What's next?
Yeah.
Save yourself a half an hour.
Oh, easy.
I think more than that, yeah.
At least half an hour. Madam Chair, if I could, I, I, my professional career was an environment, as an environmental lawyer. And I read the proposed draft regulations that Chuck has drafted, and without doing a ton of research, I didn't understand them.
Good job, Chuck.
I didn't write them either, but.
Okay.
Okay, so three A we've got, that's okay. C P C, I think we're okay with stormwater. Sounds as if we've got a solution that the select board can stand behind.
So the other, the other one was the possibility of amending, basically expanding a short-term rental bylaw in anticipation of the new state law that takes effect in February regarding A D U's being by right use in single-family home districts, as long as they're, I think it's nine hundred square feet maximum. So there's concern that with that new state law, in fact, it'll open up possibility of, of, of new A D U's and given our pretty lax, less, not very rigorous definition for short-term rentals, a lot of these new A D U's, if we have them, could be used for short-term rentals. Somewhat defeating the purpose of the A D U law, which is trying to get some more diversity on our housing stock for resident, not, not for short-term rentals. So I, I shared with you the, the bylaw, the city ordinance that Gloucester recently approved, which put much tighter controls on what kind of A D U can be rented for, for short terms. In terms of ownership, in terms of type of residence, et cetera. So I think there's some good language in there that, that would be helpful to us. I think trying to get this all together and ready for November eighteenth is awfully, awfully tight.
And the, the, the schedule for in February, you can apply for a building permit and you have to have it built and rented by mid-April.
Right, so I, I think our risk and, and, I think Sarah, no, she's on the, on the call here, she might want to chime in, but nonetheless, I think, I don't think there's a high, high risk of being flooded with new A D U's that are being occupied prior to April.
Do it at the April town meeting.
Right, I think, you know, yes, there's a risk, but I think it would not be a floodgate or a flood of.
And the, the risk might be even, let's say there were a bunch of A D U's, these permits, we, what you're, I guess, if someone were, what you're saying is they would not be required to get a permit if they had an A D U that was outside of our, our guidelines, because our guidelines are so lax, like people could just, yeah, okay.
Right.
It would be a short-term risk, I think, okay.
You know, if someone had an existing apartment or garage that they, that they're not, that they haven't permitted.
Right.
Then that potentially could be quickly permitted and occupancy permit issued, and then they could start renting it on short term and the new bylaw would miss them, it would not pick them up, they would be grandfathered.
Oh, they would be grandfathered.
That's, that's the risk.
That's the risk is that properties can be grandfathered.
That's, but that's an existing property, I mean, might need some modification, but.
Right, so someone's starting new and they're, they hope to build a new.
Too hard.
That's, you're not going to get that done in a couple of months. So.
And if they have something that they, that they're using as an A D U and it's not permitted, they could probably also be sending, using it as an Airbnb without permitting it.
Right.
So the people who are not obeying the law are likely not to obey the law.
So Sarah does have her hand up.
Okay, please, Sarah, please.
Yeah, I, I think that I do have concerns about grandfathering of A D U units. But I also think that it's more appropriate for the regulations for A D U's to be within the zoning bylaw and not try to retrofit it into the short-term rental bylaw. For instance, the state definition of short-term rental is less than a month. And I think that if it's a state mandate, we want to push to use the maximum the state allows us to use. The other big difference is in an A D U, you can't require owner on property. So it's really significantly different than our current short-term rental. And it seems to me that it needs to go into the zoning bylaw and to give you more flexibility on the short-term rental in the general bylaw and just go by the minimum we have to. And for instance, A D U's within a half mile of a train station can't require parking. That's a difference from our, and there's very little restrictions you can place on that. Now, in, you know, in, in reality, I can tell you, I have a guest suite on my first floor with a full kitchen and technically I could apply for a permit in February and have it approved as an A D U. And I'm sure there's lots of people that have those type of situations, but I don't know how many people would take that. So I think the risk of reading the email may not be super for you.
And if we were to try and put it into the zoning, that would require a public hearing from the planning board and we are out, pretty much out of time.
Right. I wanted to pull it together and I just had too many other words.
Is there anything, though, that we would still want to update as far, let's suppose we go down that road of updating it in the zoning bylaws? Isn't there anything we would still?
I think they're still, I think they're still there in updating the short-term rental.
I do too, I, I had a question about the Gloucester one, I mean, I think we should defer this for future discussion, but just a, a question on the, what Sarah brought up, the thirty-day minimum, I mean, maximum, I guess. That, that's what's considered a short-term rental, a rental that's no more than thirty days?
Correct.
And in our current bylaws, do we have something about rentals being at least six months? Or, I mean, is there, there's just, so we have nothing, okay?
We have nothing, we are silent.
All right, that's where I think the risk is.
So right, right now, we only capture rentals that are six days or less.
Okay, so aside from what Sarah said, to your point, I, I think we still have work to do as a select board to update our.
Yeah, I think you could pursue both.
Yes, that's my point, yeah.
But not between now and the eighteen.
Right, not between now and the eighteen.
Yes, exactly.
But I think we should put it on our action items to review that bylaw, set some deadlines, so we aren't having the same discussion on, you know, March fifteenth, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So, first meeting in December, read the Gloucester thing, read our current short-term and be prepared to discuss it.
Also our existing bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good boy, okay. Alan, do you have any insight into this, Mr. Botterer?
I do not. Thank you, thank you for asking.
I think we also have an unpaid bill.
So, yeah, so the last one is a bill from past, last fiscal year that did not get paid and to, in order to pay it, it takes a vote of the legislative body, which is our town meeting, to authorize that payment. It's related to consultants that were hired for the forty B appeal process and it just, the bill got lost in the shuffle. Doesn't happen very often, but when it does, we need to go to the voters. So I don't think that's a heavy lift.
It's pretty straightforward.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
The only, the only thing that's not straightforward about it is that. The only thing that's not straightforward about it is that it's a nine-tenth vote.
Right, that's the hitch.
So, do we need to discuss the order of articles on the law?
I need to discuss the order, and we need to discuss which ones you recommend approval for. We can finalize that, we do need to have a special meeting on the 29th, we can finalize things then, but it's always good to get at least a sense of the board.
It's reasonably early tonight. I don't like morning meetings, and cranky.
I notice.
So just for clarification, on these different warrant articles, are they all, with the exception of the one requiring nine tenths of the voters to say yes, are the rest of them a simple majority vote?
If I could respond?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, provided that the planning board at its hearing on October 28th takes out of the proposed MBTA zoning bylaw, the requirement for a special permit for accessory structures in the Beaver Dam Road District. Town Council has opined that including that special permit requirement would trigger a two-thirds vote requirement for the entire article.
So there are two options, they could just delete it completely and just forego that provision, or they could separate that provision out as a separate second article, and that would be a two-thirds, whereas the main article on all the other 3A-related would be a majority.
So, and just because there has been some talk as to the timing of the MBTA zoning warrant article, you know, why are we having it now, can't we push it to town meeting in the spring? I think we've discussed in some forums that, you know, if we approve it now, we could offer to repeal it in the spring, would that also be a simple majority vote, or is that, would repealing it be a different, require a different vote?
I would want to ask Town Council, but my impression is that will be a two-thirds.
Two-thirds to repeal if we, okay, I think that's important for everybody.
The exception from the two-thirds requirement is for allowing certain types of zoning as of right, one of which is multifamily, and that requires a some majority. I think if you were to go the other way, that would say two-thirds. But I, as I say, I want to ask Town Council that question.
We'll get confirmation on that.
Okay.
Is there discussion along the board of the idea of waiting, delaying? We can go ahead with the CPC and stormwater and the late bill, and take up, as many of the, as some residents have asked, take up the MBTA zoning when Milton reveals itself?
I don't, I think it's okay to vote now, and as was described, if we have to change or modify, we can do that.
That's the way to go, because I think that the money that we spend to defend our position, I'd rather spend on calling, it's not a special town meeting, even if we end up at 2:00 in the spring or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't want to be short-sighted.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that we can all hope for the best, but I think we have to prepare and be proactive as to how we're going to handle it. My preference is, I'll be the first one to call for a special town meeting.
Oh, I'll be right there with you.
There'll be about seven of us.
About seven of us, yeah.
So I think that, I just don't think it's prudent to follow suit. And I look, this is the way I look at it, when I was, if I was single, as opposed to being a family guy, right, there are a lot of things I did when I was single that I wouldn't do because I had responsibilities as a family guy. A lot of things I would do, I would, if I was not sitting here, I might push, hey, what the hell, let's wait, but we do have a family, okay? Dysfunctional family as it is, but it's a town of Manchester, and I think we have to be a little bit more prudent and responsible, and prepare for the worst and hope.
Yeah, I agree, I think that if Milton and the other, I think there's another, there are another town suing as well, or is it just Milton?
Holden, I think.
Yeah, there's more than one. If they win, I hope they win, if they win, it's going to be because of a valid legal argument. Manchester not approving this zoning change is not going to impact that, for the best of my understanding. Withholding our compliance, I don't see how that helps the legal argument, you know, against a bad law, which I think it's a really bad law. So I agree with Brian, I think we, you know, put it forward, let the people have their say, and if it goes forward and the lawsuits are successful, then we modify our zoning as we feel need to as a town. But I just don't think it helps the legal, I think some people think it's going to help the legal case if we all say no, and I don't understand that.
I mean, you still don't know what's going to happen. I mean, it could go to a town meeting and fail, but.
Right, but at least they have their say.
We did it.
If we don't, if we don't vote, by the mandate, it was at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Right, do we automatically now fall off any list for funding?
Well, even if we say no, we fall off the list, don't we?
You know, and we have, there's just too much riding on this. And I'm going to put my faith in the task force, that they're going to make their case, and level heads will prevail, and we can hope, and we can tell everyone that should the, should it fail, should Milton prevail, we'll be the first ones to call for it.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that we just, it's irresponsible not to.
Take it up.
My opinion. I agree.
Okay, I don't see any too long list of votes that we need to take, but I think we each heard each other, and we are in agreement that this should go on, the MBTA zoning should go on.
Okay.
So did you want to talk about supporting?
So just as a matter of practice, I think it's always best to see the actual written article before we say yay or nay, do we recommend it, just as a matter of due diligence.
That's fine.
No.
It's fine, we just need to make those decisions on the 29th.
Yes, I don't think there's anything real.
I mean, we could take no position and just let the people.
Like I said, I think it's good for all the articles, I'm not talking to anyone in particular, we should know what we're recommending, and I don't see anything in front of me, so I'm not ready to recommend anything, but I might recommend everything if it was just sitting in front of me.
When on the 29th, do you want to speak?
Ideally before your time, or before 1:00. So the planning board will need and hold their public hearing Monday evening, the 28th, they may, at the end of that public hearing that night, make some changes to what they're proposing. So we have what's, get to all of you, we can, what is being proposed, what's on the docket for the 28th, there may be some fine tuning of this that evening, and then that will be finalized either that night, or, well, from the planning board's perspective, it'll be finalized that night, and then we can walk through those changes on Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday morning. People's schedules, I know that it's hard to, too late in the morning, so.
I can zoom in.
What time were you thinking, I'm sorry?
We're doing it at 8:00, we're doing it at 8:30.
8:00, I couldn't make it count.
Yeah, the earlier the better, for me.
Some of us still have to.
I understand.
Early is tried, yeah.
You have to sign this stuff, though?
But then we need to sign the warrant, yes.
Okay, I mean, can we, do we have to sign, what's the deadline for signing versus attending the meeting?
So, for signing, we need, you have a few more days, you have until the end of the week.
Okay, if I got there in the afternoon to sign, that'd be fine, as long as we had the meeting in the morning.
Yes, I just, yeah, I just need to, I just need to finalize the warrant that you wrote down.
Okay.
And give it to Cricketer for publication by the end of the day, Tuesday.
So when can we have the language of the warrant? Is the language of the article is?
We'll have all the articles ready in a couple of years, in draft form. You'll see the actual language, you have 3A zoning edits.
Yeah, I understand it's going to be last minute, but the rest of them.
There may be a few edits to that, but you have the, you have the, the both, in its final form. And then the stormwater regs, that new shorter version is ready to go, I just need to, we can send that out to you.
Yeah, whatever you can send out to us this week.
Yes.
I mean, if you guys want to do eight, as long as I can do Zoom, I can do eight.
I just, yeah, and then I leave first thing, 4:00 in the morning, on the 29th. No, 30th round, 30.
Okay.
But no, so I'm thinking, so Tuesday morning is fine, Tuesday night, we're going to pan the butt.
Okay, so 8:00 on the 29th, and you will get us as much of those materials as possible. Mr. Moderator, do you have any further comments?
Alan, you're muted.
Sorry, I was muted, no, I don't have any, don't have any other comments, thank you.
Is there anyone in the room who has further? Is there anyone online who has?
That's it.
Okay. I think we're done with that item on our agenda. Okay, FY '26 capital budget.
Madam Chair, I will say goodnight, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you, Mr. Moderator. 21.
Sure, yeah, happy to. So, capital, capital planning, as you know, the finance committee identified capital planning as a high priority, you have as well, and they have started earlier than they normally do, and so we're focusing on capital right now. They, the finance committee met last Wednesday, and started to go over some new spreadsheets. So I've broken down capital into two buckets, one is what I will call sort of the standard yearly capital budget, takes care of equipment needs, some of the projects are large, but smaller, relatively smaller, pipe projects, sort of the run-of-the-mill, if you will, I don't mean to undermine those, importance of those, but more of the run-of-the-mill capital items. In the past, we've been spending in the $3 million range every year on those standard, typical, every year we tackle a fairly long list of projects, they total about $3, $3.5 million. With inflation, with the cost of construction and the equipment that has happened, I think it's proven that that $3 to $3.5 be $4 million plus or minus every year, in sort of your standard capital items. So that's one bucket, so we have a five-year plan, we add one more year to that five-year plan every year, you know, we drop off one year, we add a year. And so that's one spreadsheet that you have. The second spreadsheet is a new spreadsheet that looks at the major facility needs that we may need to do in the next 25, 30 years. And it identified those projects, potential projects, and identified bonding for those, and trying to space out that bonding in a way that, yes, it's burdensome, but can we do it in a way that doesn't break the bank in terms of taxpayers' ability to absorb the debt service on these new bonds? So that's what the second spreadsheet is. And in terms of, you know, where you spend your time, I think it's probably more important to spend time on that facility financing as a priority, and see where there's agreement moving forward on that, and then we can get to the typical yearly capital items. So if you look at the facility financing, it obviously makes a lot of assumptions, which any long-range plan will have to do, starting out with how much bonds cost in terms of interest payments, you know, do you do a 15-year bond, a 30-year bond, all of that obviously impacts the bottom line, and what kind of financial hit that causes. And then, of course, there's the projects themselves, and when are they necessary to do, and in what order. So in looking at the next 30 years, we have identified what we think are the critical projects that will need to get done. And obviously, we made assumptions about the size and scope of those projects. And obviously, this is subject to a lot of fine tuning, but I think the basic concepts, regardless of that fine tuning, are still very important to try to nail down and get a direction. So in that financing plan, you see some bonding that was approved this past year, that was for the water and sewer upgrades, that was $7.5 million. That is showing as a shorter-term bond of 15 years to get it paid off and free up money 15 years from that. Similarly, I show PFAS mitigation. So again, a big expense, it's probably, you know, 20-plus million dollars, we'll know for sure later this winter whether or not we can do that for a little less money, we should, we're hopeful that we will get some grant money as well as some settlement litigation monies that are in the works, but we do a lot of unknowns, but nonetheless, an important project to make sure that we remove the PFAS from our drinking water. So this is relatively new, this hasn't been on the books for a lot of years, like a lot of these others, because of the discovery of the impacts of PFAS, and the new, much, much lower thresholds, that EPA is requiring all public water supplies to meet. So you see PFAS and dredging, we can separate those out, about $2 million for dredging and $21 million for the PFAS work going down the line, then we show the new DPW garage, showing that going earlier, because it's, in the facility planning that's been done, the current DPW site is going to identify as a strong possibility for future public safety building. You know, there's, given the flooding threats that both fire and police have, that's a, that will become a higher priority as the years unfold here. So you see, then the DPW garage, you also see the Essex Elementary School. So, you see, then the DPW garage, you also see the Essex Elementary School. So that project is underway in the, in the, in the design stage, the planning and design stage, at the early phase of that. Anticipating that to come online in, by twenty-nine in terms of actually paying a bond. So what I showed, again, just walking through that, that facility spreadsheet, is the key projects, how much money, and then when they would kick in in terms of paying on the bond. So that's the top half of the spreadsheet, and the bottom half of the spreadsheet are the revenues to pay for those. But just to finish up the projects, so we have the Essex Elementary in there, and then further out, not until mid-thirties, twenty-thirties, showing public safety building. And town hall rehabilitation, for a total of thirty million. And then this next line, Resiliency Project Sew Wall's Covert, for a total of forty-five million. That is projected to come from the savings as bonds are retired. And instead of giving those savings back to the taxpayer, I show them going in as capital exclusions. So that, the good news is that you can keep, once you get to a higher level of, of payments, you keep that steady. I mean, not going up higher, but you're also not dropping it. I, I do think it's, it's an effective way, we were able to benefit from that over these past ten years. It enabled us to do some additional capital projects that were very helpful. And I think it's a, an approach that the voters have found acceptable. So I do assume that we can continue with that, and because of, you'll see in the revenue side, because of retiring debt, it frees up monies, particularly starting in, in the early thirties. And carrying through past twenty-fifty, and that's how it adds up over the years to that, that amount. And then finally, as a, as a large placeholder, and not taking place until the end of, close to twenty-fifty, I think it's forty-eight or forty-nine. Bonding for building a wastewater treatment plant in another location. So mainly because of, again, flooding concerns, you know, alternative maybe that you can fortify and put a very high and strong, basically, a seawall around the plant. It will have a cost, but it won't be as expensive as relocating the plant. Is that viable? That's something that, you know, over the years, we'll have to kick the tires much harder on.
Sorry, you keep saying we.
I know, right?
I'm thinking, I'm saying, yeah.
It's we, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna be out by noon.
So, in, in any case, I'm showing a seventy million dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
Tag there.
I just have one question while you're gone. So when you figure these figures for these things, I know I just said that voice. The, that's in today's dollars you're figuring, right? Or is that?
It's, it's a combination of some projection ahead.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I mean, that, that plant today would not cost seventy million dollars.
Right, but.
Am I accurate in that statement, Chuck?
Yeah, like, to, just to rebuild it as is, yeah, would be much less than seventy.
Yeah.
You know, whether or not we're really looking at a three percent escalation over the next forty years.
Right, yeah, but there's some.
Not sure we're there.
There's some kind of.
There's some factor.
Yeah.
Is it, is it super accurate?
Right, I figured that.
Bit of a, bit of a dart.
Yeah, definitely, the further out you go, more of a guessing game. I would say the ones like PFAS and, you know, probably dredging and even, you know, DPW facility, like, those are more, you know, those were just done in twenty, twenty-three dollars. So, you know, I don't think we've escalated on three percent over the next two years, but I think it's still a relevant, relevant.
Right, the further you get out.
They, they are conceptual level estimates that were based on construction factors of twenty-twenty-three and brought forward. I, yeah, I take it of the exact three percent.
Well, I wasn't looking for an exact number, I was just trying to get an idea of how you.
Oh, yeah.
How you got.
The closer, the more accurate, the further out.
Right, yeah, I get.
So those, those are the, we have four, eight, eight projects listed as the main, big facility. Projects that are, that are in our future. And then, then I look at revenues, right? What, what would it cost to actually do this? Again, making, based on all the various assumptions and timing. And so, for revenue, right off the bat, I'm looking at water and sewer. I'm assuming that the water capital fee that you approved for the meters would continue on. And those dollars would be available then to help pay off some of the debt that is in the PFAS and water sewer upgrades. I make the assumption that we instituted a similar fee in sewer, ramp it up over a few years to get to that same five hundred thousand. Then I show the, the new revenues from, from CST. The, from both Phase One and Phase Two, again, basing that in over time as, as revenues that could be used towards bond payments. Then I show both current town debt that we have, and that gradually goes away, and same with school debt that gradually goes away. And I show that being reallocated then towards these new bond payments. Then I show some liabilities that also will, will go away by early, early to mid thirties. So our, our OPEB, health insurance for retirees, and the economic retirement system should be fully funded by that same period. So that frees up about a million and a half dollars that we're currently paying for those liabilities. So again, I'm taking that money and showing it going towards bond payments. So that's how I try to reduce the impacts on, on new taxation for these bonds. So then you get to that bottom line, new tax revenue needed, that, that line eighteen, if you're looking at the spreadsheet. And then, what does that translate into a tax rate? And again, I'm assuming, starting off, each percentage point raises about three hundred thousand dollars, and that'll grow over time, about fifteen thousand dollars a year, if history is any guide. And so, if, you know, if, if we were to do exactly what's on this, this sample, you would see a three percent tax increase for bonding needs, just for the bonding. And in twenty-seven, a six percent increase in twenty-eight, and roughly a five percent, four point nine percent increase in twenty-nine.
That's just for bonding, doesn't include increases in operating costs or the small capital.
Right. So, the, the small capital, I'm assuming, is, is part of the, the overall standard budget, covered by the two to two and a half percent, which is what we typically see. But yes, you would have to, in addition to those percentages, you would want to add the typical two, two and a half percent to cover operating slash regular capital costs.
Four percent for schools.
Well, so the four percent for school, we have absorbed within the two and a half. It does not assume, you know, obviously, I haven't projected any override votes for operating, either school or town.
Would the, let's see, the high school will be twenty-five years old in thirty-four.
Yes.
And that will trigger, I mean, more.
Yes, does that get done in one year, or do improvements get made over a five-year period? How, how does that get best funded? So, correct, that's, that's, that is not in this.
And, and ten years after that, the memorial school.
Right.
Yeah.
So, you have some flexibility in that, in that forty-five million that I talked about, in terms of, I, I was showing a target towards resilient process seawalls and culverts. You could add schools, you know, capital. Medium, medium capital needs of schools. You, you could probably work that in to that, that number as well.
So based on the conversation we had at FinCom the other day, and I know we're gonna have more conversations with them about this budget. One of the things I think they were looking for from us was a sense of priorities. Out of all the things that you listed here, what do we see as the priorities? So, I think that would be helpful, just to discuss that for a minute. Secondly, I, I think it's, it's a very comprehensive, well-done analysis, so thank you. Because it's a great starting point for the discussions we need to have. I think we also need to consider how we smooth out these bumps, right? That was the other, right? And I do think we need to take a look at the existing spend. So while you're correct, we may need to increase to four million on average, okay, to accommodate for increase in costs. Not everything we do in small capital is pipes and, and, and stuff like that. We, we, to help smooth out those bumps, maybe in those years, we don't do the four million, we, we go down to two and a half or so, you know what I'm saying? We have to look at all options, because these are really big bumps in, in the tax rate. And, you know, not going over two and a half percent is important, because we, we, you know, the town is allergic to overrides, okay? But the townspeople know when they're paying more than two and a half percent, when their bill goes up. So I just think we, we need to look at all options for reducing the bumps, which includes lowering our spending or deferring some spending. For things that, I won't say aren't necessary, but maybe aren't necessary that year, you know, can we defer? Or in some instances, can you pull in? Okay? So, we, we need to use both levers to, to try and, and smooth out these.
Question, are these debt exclusions, or this is just the tax rate? You gotta get a vote on that, or?
Well, typically, there are debt exclusion votes.
Yes.
Because otherwise, to pay, you, you, you won't be able to do that, you, you wouldn't be able to, to pay for these bonds within the limits of two and a half.
No.
So, so yes, there would be debt exclusion votes.
I think we just have to revisit, oh, I'm gonna try to, the chow house. It will have like five or eight thousand dollars apiece.
So do we wanna talk priorities now, or not? Is that too early? I like the order that, that break, I mean, the PFAS is something that's.
Right, I mean, that's common, and you're not gonna really have a choice, same with the school.
And, and. You say the order, and I just want to make sure I understand what you said, what was in his email? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was looking at, yeah. So it was seven, you know, the stuff we have already approved, obviously, that's a high priority, right? We already approved that, the water and sewer upgrades, and PFAS, dredging, DPW, and Essex Elementary. I mean, that's, that looks like a good priority.
And that's not, that's nothing new, and we've always been talking about those as the top items.
I think it's, I just want to say, I think it's very important that we, that we get moving on the DPW facility. I know there's been, and I'm not saying this because Chuck's here, but, but moving that and, or making decisions about what we do with that will free up a lot of time to discuss other things, I'll say it that way. We haven't firmly committed to moving it, okay? Well, we better make that decision, because a lot of other stuff is riding on that decision. So, I, I feel very strongly that during this cycle, we need to get moving on it.
I think we need to have a discussion of what we actually need there, too.
Exactly, yes. And, and I'd like to, and I've asked this to Chuck already, but I understand the estimate is twenty-two, I wanna know what we can get for twelve. I wanna know what we can get for ten, I wanna know, what, what are we giving up by saying, I, I, I can only afford twelve million, what can you do for me? If we ask the question a different way, we really might learn something that we can then apply to some of these other projects.
So I didn't just come here to look pretty, if you want, I can. Like, I don't wanna, you know, mire you guys down for hours, because I could. But I do think it's worth probably talking about some of those thoughts, and I think I have answers ready to, you know, talk about. And then I could certainly provide any back, background data or other analysis that, you know, you need, so. I don't want to steal any ice thunder, if you guys have more.
I'm just saying, I think we're talking about during this financial cycle that we're just starting, actually putting some money in to do something there, okay? I'm saying right now, I support that, but we've gotta have the conversation, we're gonna, and if it's putting on our, you know, talking now, or putting it on our action item list to have a good discussion on DPW. Let's get moving, let's make the, outline the decisions we gotta make, and make some decisions.
I don't, I wouldn't give into that detail too many.
No.
But for the, for the coming budget right now, in capital is the planning for the DPW, is that correct?
Proposed.
I don't know what the number's gonna be, but that's a topic, and there's gonna be some number next to that line, or we expect that there will be.
So, you know, to kind of help with that, we, I think we have a placeholder, I'm not sure.
Well, I've seen some numbers here, yeah.
What it is, but, so I think we have the placeholder. We, we have money in this year's budget that we're actively looking to spend right now, that will inform whether that number is high, low, or somewhere, you know, right on. You know, the kind of short answer is, you know, if, if we don't need it, I won't spend it, so we can always defer it to a following year, whatever's unspent. And, you know, we talk about that whenever we execute a contract for any, you know, design or construction or anything. So I think, so that's all certainly on the table, and, you know, the way we always do it, frankly. So I'm not too worried about that, I just wanna make sure that we stay on pace, because I do think it's, you know, a high priority.
So we, we have allocated money for a technical.
Geotechnical.
Geotechnical.
Exploration, yes.
And when does that happen?
We actually are under contract right now. I'm waiting for the final loads of compost, that, you know, finished compost to move off the site, so we can physically get there to do the borings and the certain. So I've been pushing that to be done sooner or later, hopefully by the end of this month, which means November, you know, they're literally under contract to go out there and do the work. Which is, you know, reasonable time anyway, because leaves are off the trees, and, you know, you get a better look at things and stuff like that. But certainly, the big piles of finished compost need to be gone to get any sort of accurate data or one.
Okay, is there a problem of getting that done? Is there pressure that we need to put on Black Earth?
Oh, yeah, but I, we'll, we'll see in a week.
Say true. Say true.
The day's coming.
Okay. Maybe we all need to go up there with bags.
I'll watch.
The single problem is gone.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, before we let a contract to design this thing, we probably need to have a long discussion about what it is we're designing. Exactly.
So, I will forward, you know, we already have some of this in the can, believe it or not. So, before we did the facility master plan, I've actually been a part of two siting analysis for DPW. One was before we moved the compost to the Pine Street location, and the next one was the alternative analysis between the existing site and the school street site. Which actually does have in it needs and wants, as well as just the programming that exists today on the Pleasant Street site. So I'll, I'll, it's, it's worth reading, I don't know that it's.
I would appreciate, I'd like to see it.
So that, so that does exist, and then, you know, stepping forward into the facility master plan, we again looked at exactly what would be, you know, desired or needed, and, you know, how that shakes out costs. Now, it is probably a step short of where, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go once we get, you know, another couple months down the road. And certainly, you know, Kathy, we've talked about alternative construction methods and different site analysis. I think the, the cost that's presented, the twenty-two-ish million, it's not, it's in order of magnitude costs, conceptual level costs. I don't think it's gonna be two million, I don't think it's gonna be two hundred million, but it's a, it's a good starting point, certainly room to come down. And so I, I do think, obviously, we would, we would very much get into the weeds on, before we design, you know, say, the. before we design, you know, say, the placeholder is $30 million, before we execute that full 3 million, if we're taking things off the table, then we wouldn't obviously spend the whole 3 million. But I think the placeholder is still valid, or 2 million, whatever it is.
My questions at this point are, please send all of us all the information you've got. When would you be ready to have a discussion about the difference between needs and wants?
Well, I guess I would put it back on you. I'll send you the, the document that I have now. If you have any gaps or, you know, questions, then I would say just email me directly. If it warrants me doing a lot more research, then I'd need a couple of weeks to a month or whatever. But if it's, you know, kind of as you guys were expecting, then I'll, I'll talk about it next week, or two weeks, or after town meeting, or whenever it was.
So for us, we'll have the discussion in December.
Okay.
December.
Depending on the depth of your questions and what information gaps we need to fill.
Are we meeting with the FinCom the first week of December? We're supposed to have a joint meeting with them to kick off the budget and season, I can't remember what they...
So I know we talked about the, the joint meeting for the budget, for the early budget, that'll be the, was that the 16th?
That's 16th, okay, so the first week of December, we're not crowding that. Yes, okay, yep, December 16th, Joint Select Board FinCom, okay.
But there was, talk about possibly doing a joint meeting on capital prior to that.
Oh, okay.
I don't have that note in front of me.
Something that I was leading up to is perhaps the whole review of the design and doesn't need to be done by the whole committee in a regular meeting. We probably should talk about it one, one more time, and then if there are people who are interested in working closely with Chuck, we can set up perhaps even including, you know, other people, people from other committees and people from, up to city task force, but yeah.
So believe it or not, me and I have both discussed the need for potentially some sort of facility committee to kind of help hurt cats and get these, get these things going. But we'll leave that one for a much future date as well.
Give us, give us a, you know, until after our meeting where we get our questions answered. And then we can send them.
Can I poll you guys again, I guess, on one other topic that came out of last week's facility meeting? And the, it's the idea of co-locating, that's why I con, I think, the staying.
Oh, I wondered why they were staying.
There has been some question out there. It certainly wasn't part of the facility master plan, but potentially co-locating of public safety as well as DPW on that site. Now, I haven't...
Did you say School Street?
Yes, on the potential new DPW site. And so we did look at it as just a standalone public safety site, you know, on the upper kind of tier where DPW would be. And at that point, didn't pass kind of that kind of grading because of the proximity to the road and, you know, other factors in terms of response times and so on. But that's not to say it's impossible, it's just to say it wasn't ideal in the way we laid out the entire plan. And as we said when we talked in the facility master plan, it is a living document, and I'm happy to go back and look at things if they warrant a closer look. And so that did come up last week as well. And so, you know, I've had discussions with these guys, we've been up on the site prior to that and have looked at it and kind of, you know, one last time, what are the pros and cons and so, so on and so forth. But the big one that I see from a just building perspective, taking the public safety side out of it, but they can answer that better than me, is the, the idea of co-locating them makes some sense. And I, I do like it in terms of building stuff, and, you know, makes a lot of sense as a campus. But the ideal scenario would be the public safety portion would be located right at the intersection of school and outlaw. And that would be in the face of kind of the existing zoning, as well as those other restrictions in that kind of area, which would be, you know, you're not meeting all the setbacks and special permit requirements of the LCD, no matter what. But then, there's also Concom, you know, wetlands jurisdiction in there for being in the buffer, not no build zone necessarily. So that's to say, like, it, it is feasible, but it would require that level of kind of public support that would rise beyond, you know, us just putting it like this is the place to go, you know, even if public safety is supported or not. And so I, I guess I, you know, just to kind of put in your minds, like, we will vet that out a little bit more in terms of what that would cost and the potential impacts. But that's to say, it is a much heavier lift. And that would be, you know, the same issues we heard about the blasting for CST would be front and center. The issues for Shingle Hill and potential 40B, front and center, you know, in the Concom jurisdiction. So like, all of these questions would then be thrown on, on top of just the financial ramifications and everything else we're talking about. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, what, what your guys' thought would be, kind of just as a straw man type thing. You know, that, that is a potential.
I see Brian pointing at the chiefs, and I would also like to hear from them regarding response times to our riskiest area, which is the downtown and the harbor.
Yes, senior.
Well, I don't think the response time would be really any, any different, since we know the town is small as it is. One thing we did discuss was the 128 bridge, if that were to go out and get hit for any known reason, then we would be on that side of town. However, one of my concerns that have really been out of service, but, you know, there, I mean, there, there, there is that sort of potential. I do know that when Rock, that was a similar concern, when Rock built their new police station, they moved it from the center of town toward the outskirts. They found that they did have more walk-ins than, than they did, actually did when they were in the center of town, due to parking and, and, and due to, you know, just not, people not being seen walking. But, but the bridge was a, was a sort of concern.
Yeah, that would be my only concern, is just a one-way access.
So to answer Chuck's question, are we open to it? I'm open to all options. My, I'm definitely open to all options. My concern, though, is I still have visions of the boat fire we had at the ramp. And, you know, thank God, we had a fire station right there, firefighter who saw the smoke and prevented that from turning into something really ugly. That is my fear about it.
I mean, I look at it a couple of different options. You know, you look at the Pleasant Street site, you know, School Street's a direct shot coming down. You know, for, for us, I think that all the sites have positives and negatives. One thing I might look at is Middleton, they, they have, they're building a whole town complex with a golf course. You see, and then they got a cheaper rate on construction, because they put it all out at the same time. So, you know, I don't know what the answer to that is, but what's the cost benefits to that? In the long, you know, looking at the forest through the trees, I don't know what some of them look like, but...
Would it be possible to do something where, where you stationed some of the equipment in one place? So that you don't have to use the submerged part of the fire station and the core elsewhere?
Yeah, you know, there are renovation potentials at the current station. I think you're gonna run into some grant funding problems being within the floodplain and from what I've done on a cursory view. So I don't think we're gonna have as much money's coming in to assist us. But I think that's, that's an option. But it also doesn't fix the police station either, so.
Well, I mean, the police station doesn't flood all the time.
The, I was, I am still a fan of Pleasant Street. I do like the visibility that School Street affords.
Yeah.
Okay, coming into town, access, we had discussed this over a year ago, and your concerns were fire truck pulling out of the, onto residential area on Pine, on...
Yeah, it's Pleasant Street.
So I think it's certainly worth, building, looking at a municipal center. And like you said, I'm seeing what's going on up at Middleton now, got by it every day.
I think the response time thing, I mean, it's no different to not being down here than having...
And you have to walk the other way, yeah.
It's, it's more about where, where the risk is, right? From a fire standpoint personally, and you can tell me I'm all, all wrong, I see the risk as the downtown.
Certainly, I mean, it's denser.
It's densely populated, and you got, you know, floating piles of fiberglass and gasoline, right? So that's my fear from a fire standpoint. I'm, thankfully, we're a blessedly, you know, safe town, and I'm less concerned about, you know, the police coming from School Street, less concerned about that. Fire makes me nervous.
To that point, Kathy, I've lived downtown for 25 years. You know, other than an ambulance response here and there, I don't see any, there's not, I haven't seen a fire truck downtown in forever.
Well, you weren't on Pine Street last week, were you?
There have been a couple of...
You know, you look at the different spots, the one that benefit the Pleasant Street is, you know, you worry about downtown flooding, it allows us to kind of split the town from an elevated perspective in those events. So, you know, looking at each one of those.
There have been a couple of car fires on 128. That's, that's for sure. I mean, I, I'm, I'm open to all alternatives, and the, the challenge we have is there aren't very many. But the two projects are on a different timeline. And I would think that whatever's going on with the DPW and the planning, you have to keep in mind, okay, so how is this space gonna be optimized for safety, police slash maybe fire center as well? And how that all fits together? I, I do think that if it makes sense, the zoning and the permits, I think, can, can be worked out.
Keep your options flexible, right? Like you said, like, you know, Greg said earlier, we, we're not on the same timeline. Some things we're talking about, we don't need for 10 years, right? So keep your options flexible. We can build things in a way that they could be expanded in the future, some modular approach that you can tack on other things like Legos, right? But keep your options open, and the more flexible, the better, because we, we don't know what's gonna come, come down the...
You know, we were purposely not building in those buffers, because it's harder. So DPW is inherently not gonna try and encroach on that. But with public safety complex, I thought we would have to, and therefore, you know, we would need that support.
So if we, if we build a DPW, is that gonna change the way we build it if we're gonna add on down the road?
That's what I'm saying, is I don't, I don't think so, because there are, there are certain elements of their operations that we would consider in our build-out anyway. You know, like, say, shared meeting space or something like that, or they need, you know, response, incident management center or stuff like that. Because their current facility here is not great for that in the kind of an incident. Having it somewhere else would make a lot of sense right now, I think it's a school. DPW is more sense, I think. But not at our current facility, because we don't have those providers either. But, so like, that kind of, you know, would be built one way or another, but it's all up and removed from that area that I'm envisioning where they would go. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see it being an issue, and certainly doesn't have to be done at the same time, but, you know, we could kick the tires on, you know, what are the cost benefits, you know? I don't think we're cutting any costs in half again, but, you know, there is a lot of overlapping, you know, site work in contractors, and infrastructure certainly, you know.
I think it, the only thing I think is that it pushes it down the road that much further.
If we, if we focus on the DPW with the idea that it could be expanded and just work on the DPW, trying to take this whole thing as a single project, that's an elephant in the boa conspector.
Right. I think, yeah, I think, right.
I agree, but so again, to everybody's...
Just don't shut any doors.
It sounds like we're all very much on same page.
Don't close the doors.
We learned after last week's FinCom, we learned on something, although we are. And so I think that, yeah, we, we were looking into these things anyway, I just wanted to make sure we said it, so that you guys are aware.
So I think you mentioned things that we're going to do. You're going to give us a lot of materials, we're going to try and adjust those materials and come back after this chat meeting and talk about this in, in more detail. And, and unless everyone has other concern, I suggest that we... Thank you, gentlemen, for all of the time that you have spent with us, and, and...
You're never getting it back.
Thank you very much, that would be very useful.
Yep.
I was wondering why they were hanging around.
Moral support. Okay, the next item on the agenda. I'm lucky that we seem, we have read some updates, and it's used as assigned place.
Let's see, well, it's the DPW, and that was that topic, that's pretty much that. Council on Aging. I might, I, I met with the seniors today, and they were asking questions about where we are on a new director because Nancy's retiring. Has that been something that has been on your to-do list?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't heard too much about that.
No, we haven't, yeah.
But they were, they were wondering...
See, it's sort of as an November, December effort.
Okay, all right, that's the primary thing. They also were curious about the meeting, which I know you cannot attend tomorrow, or can you?
Tomorrow, I'll be late.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine.
Depending how long they meet.
They're, they're looking forward to updates on the senior center and money raising, well, you know them.
Yep.
A major topic. So those are the, the two things there.
I actually got to a school community meeting. The two pieces of information, I gave you the budget, the budget general. They are still discussing the, their reserve policy. But that seems to be settling down somewhat. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is going to do a review, and the review is going to be operational and not educational. That is to say, they will be looking at the management of the schools, the HR, and, and that, that part of the organization, which I think is what both towns wanted to have happen. So that will be ongoing for, I think, about six months.
When is that gonna start, did they say?
They're starting, I think that they start with a self-evaluation, and I think they're starting that now. But I, I can find out more precisely what the schedule is. From that, everything seems to be reasonably going along. The school building project has the, yeah, school building, that's right. They have a team that does the school building. It's got people who were on Memorial, and Andy Oldeman and Gordon Bruce Booster. It seems like a really good team. They have not hired an operation manager, which is their next step. They've decided that they need to look at the possibility of splitting the grades so that the, maybe K through three, K through two...
K through usually.
K through two would be, would stay in Essex.
Yep. Amen.
And the...
We would verse them in grade three at Memorial.
We would verse them in grade three at Memorial. That's probably, Memorial is way, significantly below the design guy, that capacity, yeah. It's a little complicated, because it's part of the regional agreement. So it would require a town meeting vote to change. And the, 10 years ago, when they did, were setting up to build Memorial, they did a fairly significant study and felt that the parents of elementary school kids in both towns wanted their kids there. Whether it makes educational or financial sense, parents are peculiar.
But you know that, that I'm glad to hear they're, they're open to that, because the K through two would, would solve that issue, right? Essex, K through two students would stay in Essex. Manchester, K through two would stay in Manchester, and then the Essex children would join in Memorial in grade three. Manchester, K through two would stay in Manchester and then the Essex children would join in Memorial in grade three. It saves millions if we do it that way because of K through two typically does not require all of the ancillary facilities that a full K through five elementary does. You need a little playground. You don't need fields, you know, you know, it's much less expensive. So I'm so pleased to hear that they are considering that. That, that could save us a lot of money, a lot of money.
They're also considering relocating to like near their dump off of Apple Street.
Yeah, they bought a piece of land, I think.
They bought a piece of land there.
Yeah, off of Apple Street.
So, but, but I think that the committee that's currently studying this is quite capable of making those, making a decision about whether relocating or building behind the current school or that. That's basically what I know about what's going on in the-
That, that, or that Apple Street location?
Yeah.
Only problem is the road.
Tough street.
Unless they're going to come in from the-
Hilltop Street.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, it's-
It goes over to the, the dump in the DPW by, so that-
Dump, yeah.
Yeah, that stretch of land goes right through, but, I don't know. Yeah, whatever, but-
Someone else is heading.
Okay.
Someone else, we have enough of our own.
Thought, thought I'd let you know what, what they're talking about. And I think you know what the MVP is only people would do. You're sweating blood.
Actually, they did a really nice job in Manchester.
I've heard a lot of good reviews.
Yeah. So it was pretty well received.
Good.
Uh, yeah, I got a few updates. So, um, reminder, the Board of Health is having a public hearing on proposed updates to, I guess it's the tobacco, marijuana, et cetera law, regulations. Public hearing is this Thursday night at 6:30. So if you're interested in understanding what the proposed changes are, do you have a synopsis, Greg, on what they're proposing?
So, most of it is just sort of separating out, well, currently combined and breaking them out into separate sections. But the, the most significant change and potentially the most controversial is, um, adding a, a new regulation that says any person born after 2004-
Generational.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, would, would not be eligible to purchase tobacco products even after reaching age twenty-one.
Does that, like, ever?
Ever, yeah.
Does that include vaping products?
Yes.
It does.
I just, I think that's, that's a real overreach, that's coming.
So anyway, that's what the public hearing is about. You may want to attend as a citizen.
When, when is this?
Uh, Thursday night at 6:30. So that's going on, on the less controversial side, let's see. So, uh, Bike and Ped has, has met. They are working with Chief Fitzgerald, um, uh, an e-bike safety, uh, some sort of e-bike, uh, video. They had a video, I think they made with him last year on a different topic and biking in general. And so now e-bikes are the latest cause of, you know, injuries, et cetera. So we're all trying to figure out what to do with that, so that would, that would be great. Uh, Bike and Ped also voted to endorse the Green, the Green Belt Land acquisition that we're going to be proposing on the warrant for town meeting, so they think it's a great idea and they're going to formally endorse that. The downtown improvement, um, they, um, are submitting an application to the CPC to obtain CPA funding for the attractive streetlights that they put on Summer Street. They want to, as part of the Culvert project, when this project digs up this area of the downtown, we'd like to replace the streetlights with the more historically accurate or, uh, you know, attractive streetlights. So I encourage them, you know, do it, do it while we're digging it up and, uh, so they're going to make their case to CPC for that funding. And I think that was it.
Okay, that's, I'm making a note here because that winds up under the historic district commissions.
Yeah, they want-
A, a little bit.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Because they're involved with lighting and that makes sense. Going around the curve on Beach Street, that's outside the district, but now you're coming back.
Yeah, so if they're, I mean, their thought was to do what they did on Summer Street, if that's not historically appropriate. I'm sure they would be, you know, amenable to doing something that is historically appropriate. The, the idea is to get rid of these ugly streetlights that are in front of town common. So I'm sure there's common ground there.
Hawks Rep, uh, they voted to hold pricing at Singapore Beach. Yeah. They had a good year this year and family knows what's going to happen next year. They decided to, you know, all the numbers work, so they're going to hold it this year. After what I heard, right, they should raise it. Ten thousand dollars. Not, but at this point, that's the only other, right, is it? Do a chow house now and, you know, for the next year, we're good.
When are we having the updated parking discussion? Because we had said we were going to have it at the end of the season, while it was fresh in our minds and that the season's over.
Yeah.
Is that November or?
November.
It is November, okay.
Fourth, first term.
Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the last planning board meeting, I had some going on and the hyper advisory hasn't met, so that's about it.
Okay, the, the second agenda. Is there anything that people would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull out C.
Okay.
I'd like to pull out B.
Okay.
Why are we doing it?
Okay, is there a vote to approve the meeting minutes?
Second.
Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anna says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, that was easy. Oh, the contract for the town administrator recruitment. Josh.
Have we even posted it on our own?
No, we have nothing.
I don't know, why are we spending money on? Why, why, why don't we just, I, I can't wrap my head around. We haven't even attempted to, uh, post it on the MMA, uh, website or see what's out there. We can always revisit this in two months if we don't like what we see for, uh, for, uh, response. But at this point, I'm, I'm reluctant to spend money then on something that we can certainly try ourselves. Uh, you know, we've, we've also talked about succession planning here in town. There's a lot of options, I think, that don't require us spending a lot of money. I haven't been able to cost to, to post it. I'd like to explore that option in the next six weeks if we're, if we're contractor. Spend money we don't have to spend.
Where would that put us on a time, timeline wise?
So it's a little early to post right now. Depending on the timing. If we're targeting, you know, early summer to have someone under contract, say someone under contract by the end of June and then, you know, six, eight weeks later, uh, after they give notice, they'll, they'll be taking my position, which is, you know, middle of, middle of August, which is what I'm shooting for. So I, I mean, I think it's early to do that. I hear what you're saying, you can do that first of the year. And see what happens. It's, uh, well, I'll let Johnny speak to the recruiters.
I have some comments and I, and I understand that and there will be all kinds of people in the mix. But to organize and manage the process and do that internally takes a lot of volunteers on a committee and we're going to have to have a committee and somebody who's going to be committed to do that. It's quite a few hours of pulling things together and setting up interviews and, okay, how's all of this process going to evolve? I'm a little bit concerned about getting people that are going to be able to put that time together. I understand the timing problem that, that, uh, that Greg has mentioned. And I, I think we need to take advantage of, in any event, a recruiter. I mean, we could post it as described and maybe get a little bit behind the eight ball, but you still want a recruiter to go and they've got a rolodex. We all know how that works. And that's, you know, if you've got an experienced group, they know how this process goes and they have the rolodex to chase down the possible people. It may be that the best person is intern. It may be that that's the situation, but that process still has to be managed and I'm concerned about having, uh, the time and-
So, do I interrupt just briefly? Well, just because I've forgotten, what is the amount of money we're talking about?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
Okay.
So it's, it's short money for a position of this importance. John is correct, you typically use a recruiter. Because part of what they're going to do is meet with stakeholders and learn about what we want out of our next town administrator, right? What, what are the characteristics that you want to see? What are the requirements of, of the position? They're going to talk to people because it's a great opportunity to kind of, you know, open our aperture a little bit. Also, um, they are very well networked. So they did indicate it's going to be a competitive, um, market. And we talked about getting something posted in, um, at the January timeframe so we could take advantage of the MMA conference in January to see who's interested and maybe meet some people in person. So just typically for a leadership position like this, you would use a recruiter.
Yeah.
Kind of par for the course.
Yeah, the, um, Kathy and I and Greg met with this one recruiting firm that Greg knows well, but he gets calls every week for people, uh, looking at, see if they can attract him away. Uh, this is a fairly prominent group. They did say that about sixty percent of all searches are recruiter. And of all, of all of the town managers, sixty percent generally go through a recruiter. Forty percent do not. They do sixty percent of those sixty percent. So they are the dominant player, um, in this area. And they described some of the challenges we have and I guess the biggest one is geography. Greg accepted because he moved here, but most town managers will not move and of course, we're dealing half our radius is water.
So how's your trying to have, will you recruit?
You know, I don't, I don't remember how I first learned of the, the opening. I don't know if I saw it on my, on the recruiter's ad or, or did they, did they send me an email? It was, uh-
These people, they send out emails, but then they pick up the phone and call people. I mean, they do the cold calls.
Greg did say, we had a recruiter, but he was contacted by a recruiter, he's not sure. But the town hired a recruiter in 2012 or 13 or whenever.
Uh, yes.
Back then, yeah, we used to recruit at that.
So do they do the weeding out or is that our responsibility?
They will weed to a certain point and probably say, here are five people.
So that's where the screening committee.
Yeah.
We talked about putting together a screening committee, which would be made up of different, you know, few people, board members, maybe a, we talked about a prior select board member who had gone through this process before, maybe an at-large member, that's what we probably need to talk about at our next meeting, the makeup of the screening committee. And, and those people would screen the candidates for ultimate selection by the select board.
So typically the recruiter, you know, they get thirty applications. They'll, they'll whittle that down to eight or so, present those eight to the screening committee, screening committee say, yeah, we like the looks of these five. And they'll interview the five and then they'll recommend three to you as a board. And then, and then it's turned over to you as a board to do those interviews of those three finalists. And the recruiters will help with setting that up and, and help you with the questions and that sort of thing if you-
Well, similar, I've been through a superintendent, sir.
Yeah, there's some.
Basically, it is.
There's some.
Yeah. I mean, the, we said that, that the money involved is quote, "short money." I think we've probably all been exposed to recruiters, which generally make a ton more than that in the private sector. But this is a very specific, uh, discipline that three hundred and fifty towns here in Massachusetts need. So they, they are well schooled in terms of the, uh, critical issues they just need for your town, which are the critical issues among all of the issues that, uh, they're familiar with. They would probably interview us, I'm sure they would.
Yes.
Yeah, they'll interview you.
And, and so we're going to tell them what's-
What happens if I fail?
Important.
In the key of the town.
We'll arrange a break on the curve.
Yeah. Still a problem.
As well as what you, it's really-
At least, um, I'm somewhat convinced.
Well, I move that we approve the contract for the town administrator recruitment.
Second.
Okay, Jeff.
Hmm, yes.
Brad.
No.
Kathy, yes. Ann says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, contract for the operational audit discussion.
So here we have, uh, two different proposals. We, we see three. It didn't include the, the, sort of the middle one. Uh, I feel like the two that I showed you, um, are highly qualified. Do the work, um, just because of their, their background, they're all, they're all retired managers. They, they've been in the, in the industry for a long time. So, but you had two different proposals. One, um, is sort of a strategic strike team. Focus sort of on that. I don't know if I want to call it low hanging fruit, but, but the focus very narrowly on a handful of recommendations. And, and put those forth and help us flush those out. The, the other firm would take a more comprehensive approach, a deeper dive. And they will also look at, you know, uh, action, actionable steps to take that are, you know, prioritize those, but, but it'll be a deeper dive. So one estimated about fifty hours and the other doubled that about a hundred hours. Um, and there, the two prices reflect those, those differences, one is about double the other. So in my mind, I have gone back and forth, the pros and cons for, for, you know, either approach. And, and certainly both firms will say, if you want something a little different, we're, we're happy to, to go back to something a little different.
Can you say who the third firm was or?
Third firm was, uh, UMass Collins, Collins Center at UMass.
Well, what was, I didn't see any private sector experience at all in either of the proposals I'm trying to dig them up here. That was disappointing.
The, uh, capital strategies has some people that haven't, they don't, haven't been assigned a heavy role, but they do have some people in the office that are private, that have come from the private sector. This proposal more comprehensive.
Which date did you send that out, Ben? I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time doing, I have to email it this second.
I'm sorry, let me see.
What was the date you sent us those requests, um, the-
It was in your packet.
Oh, it was in the packet? I could send it to us previously though, I thought, maybe, maybe I misread that. Okay, it was in the packet.
You would find it helpful, we could have a couple of you do a meet, you can ask questions, do a quick interview. If that is something that you would find helpful. Obviously, we're anxious to get it underway just because, um, we're hoping that we can implement some of the recommendations as part of this budget cycle.
You all seem to be looking at things. Yeah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to sort this out here because in the, in the packet, I'm not sure, we've got, a lot of these names are the same. Community paradigm.
They're the same ones for the, uh, we just-
Yeah, it's the same one, it's a different, different group. Yeah, the same ones, a different, different group.
And then the other one is, is the Capital Strategic Solutions.
Right.
So one is about 10,000 and one is about 20,000, 21,000.
Yeah.
Like I said, they're both willing, the one who has fewer hours is willing to put more hours on the table if you want a deeper dive. And the one that proposed a deeper dive is willing to do.
A shallow dive.
A, a more shallow dive and shave off some dollars. You know, they, they would prefer, they think it's best to do the comprehensive.
Do you have any experience with either of these groups personally? I mean, in, in your professional career?
I, I haven't used either one in the past. I, I, I know the players just from other. Just from other things I've been involved in. Like I said, they're, they're retired managers of, they've retired in the last five years. I've, I've known them for quite a number of years, just in the profession.
What was your preference?
I mean, I think both would do a very credible job. I'm confident in that. Bottom line question for me is, do we want the more comprehensive to start or not? And I, I listen, I, I have gone back and forth in my head.
What's the downside of being comprehensive?
$10,000.
Well, and is that the amount of time?
So we have a grant for 18,500.
So we're talking the.
And that number, so one, we don't pay anything.
$1,500 to the town? That we're saying? Versus no money.
Two, two thousand. Or three thousand.
Two thousand, whatever the difference is.
Three thousand.
$3,000, I would go comprehensive.
Yeah, and I just, like I said, if, if the, I'm interested in whichever company will also consider, you know, more private industry best practices, not just municipal. Because when you're talking about efficiency, the government's not the best source of lessons learned there. So I, I want a little infusion of, you know, someone who's been in private industry. So if, if that's capital, then that would be my preference. I also think it's different, it's nice to get a different perspective from the people who are doing the recruitment for the town administrator to get a. Because the town, the, the people who are Paradigm, they're doing the town administrator recruitment, they're going to learn a lot anyway during the, their interviewing process. I'm sure we can learn some lessons from that and getting a different company to do the operational audit. It'll give us a completely different perspective perhaps.
I think this one is up to you, John.
Yeah.
Pick a name and.
Oh, the pressure's on.
What was the differential, 2,000 bucks? Okay.
No, 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 the differential is 10,000. We have an $18,000 grant, which will pay for all but.
3,000.
3,000 of the most, more expensive and all of the less expensive, and we have to get some money back.
Yeah. But the net number differential to us is $2,000 for the most.
Yeah.
Two or three? And, and to Kathy's point, I think you can learn more with a different guy. Okay? So that's the guy.
Capital Strategic Solutions.
So, all right, so I'll make a motion that the board approve to enter into a contract with Capital Strategic Solutions to perform the operational audit.
Second.
Okay, Jeff.
Sure.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. I say yes.
John says yes.
Hey, you got to move the, okay.
Okay.
Town administrator support.
You already talked about tobacco regulations. We talked about briefly Ocean Street, but we did not get that grant. And yes, we need to talk about what next steps might be. You can shoot that up for the next meeting.
I'm sorry, so we are going to discuss that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Just a little bit of update, a lot of comments, questions, concerns about the one spy rock and the access off of C Street. There, there is no curb cut granted. And what they are constructing on site falls within the parameters of what you're allowed to do. So if, if, if they wish to have a curb cut, they need to come back to us. And the DPW director will, will put that request to the planning board as a, as a special permit request. So that's the process that it would follow. So the.
So suppose they don't come back and actually request it, but just do it. That's what I think the concern of the community is.
Then there would be an enforcement action taken.
So.
I think Chuck said he would just curb it right over anyway.
So the enforcement action would be triggered by what?
If they try to use it on a permanent basis.
Is there actually a curb, a curb there? That's what was my question.
There is no actual curb.
Right. Yeah, okay.
My point though is what triggers the enforcement action other than a neighbor complaining? Will the building inspector go over there and look on his own? Or does he have to wait for somebody to complain to his office?
He can initiate.
I should have phrased that differently, will be.
So. It'll prob, most likely wait until construction is finished.
Okay.
Depending on what the building inspector will allow for temporary construction work. That's a judgment call. We don't, we don't issue official access points for construction. On occasion, the building inspector will allow a property owner to go, you know, get onto their property for construction purposes. But that is very different than a curb cut in the driveway and access.
I'm very concerned that they will have established by using it for construction, they will have established a, a de facto case that it is in fact safe. Because they're using it and they have, haven't had an access.
I believe my conversations with Chuck is that when he grants this, it'll be required to have detailed work there. There'll be a.
Right, right.
So if you're using it for driveway all the time, I pay for a cop to be there full time. You know, it's, I mean, that, I don't think that DPW has a problem with it being a construction's. Acc, access.
See, it's not a DPW issue.
Yeah, but what he's saying, but what he's saying is that, to your point, there will be. There'll be strict criteria to continue to use it as a construction only site and not de facto driveway or.
How do we know when they're done? If the enforcement would be triggered by the completion of the project.
Certificate of occupancy.
So certificate of occupancy, okay. This would be the trigger for looking at the property. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand the process.
So if there are further concerns about legal issues, I think we should hold that for.
A different.
A different, a different, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, we, we interrupted your report with.
No, that was.
That was it.
Okay, in that case. I move that we enter into an executive session for MGL, chapter 30A, section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and not to return to open session.
You, you may return to open session for a minute, depending on what you decide.
In that case.
It just depends on your deliberations.
So.
Or you could wait until the next meeting and make that any decision.
Let's, let's leave open the possibility that we do it tonight since we're all sitting here. So let me withdraw that motion and move instead that we enter into executive session for MGL, chapter 30A, section 21A3. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body.
Second.
Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay. In which case we can shut down. Set Debbie away, close the door. Send me away.
But he can't go home.
No, yeah, no one go home.
Because we may come back.
If you keep the, you have to keep the Zoom.
You have to keep the Zoom because.
We have to shut off the Zoom.
And reestablish it.
And reestablish it. Yep.
I think Jeff should stay too.
Don't help her, Brian. She's fully capable of helping us.
Pete Tab, stick around.
So would you explain to the gentleman outside what we're doing and we're ruining his life, but that's the way it is?
Keep him, keep him here.
Keep him here because we may need.
I don't think, I don't.
But tell him we'll be very efficient.
I don't think it'll be long.
Okay. I think you probably heard that. Hi.
We should shut down the Zoom now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
We have to go, we have to go back anyway.
We're not, it's not, we're not done yet.
We're not done yet, true.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, log in the zone. I don't log in.
That's fine. Okay, we're good.
Okay. We have ended the executive session and we are back in the public session. And Greg, can you suggest wording for a motion?
So yeah, so we have a draft decision on the 40B project. It will include that the applicant should proceed and get a permit. So it is overturning the ZDA denial. It is, the discussion in the executive session was whether or not to pursue an appeal of that decision in the courts. And so a motion would be in order to approve pursuing an appeal of the HAC decision to the courts.
A motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Further discussion. John.
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to a chair?
So moved, second.
No further discussion. Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.